Welcome to our evening meeting and it's wonderful to see all your bright faces out there. Lots of celebrating to do tonight, but we're going to begin by saying in closed session, we met and discussed employee issues and we are now, and we have nothing to report. And I'm going to now ask Mrs. Lori Avalos to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, our teacher of the year.
Okay, ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This afternoon, we met in a workshop when LAE sang to us and did a report. And Mrs. Reed, would you like to share that afternoon with us?
Thank you so much, President Davidson. It really was a great start to our meeting. We were graced by the home of the Tigers. Principal Jenny Padilla joined us and really just shared all the amazing things that are going on at our school site. She really highlighted they raised $83,000 this school year in a fit-a-thon, completely parent-supported, talked about the campus candidness from excellent instruction to the partnership with their parents. And then she was joined by two lovely students who really showed their, shared their perspective of LAE. And then she closed out by honoring a hero of the heart, Mrs. Andrea Mora.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. It was wonderful. Now, my board report would normally come now, but because we have lots going on tonight, I relinquished my time. So we will move to our student board member, Joseph, for the, for the student report, which is always wonderful.
Good evening, Madam President Davidson, esteemed board members, Dr. Pulver, any community members watching in person or online and present supporters. My name is Joseph Claypool and I am your student representative to the Board of Education from Los Alamos High School. By the time I finish this presentation, somewhere in the U.S., another life will be taken by drinking and driving. That's the reality the Every 15 Minutes program aims to confront at Los Alamos High School. On Thursday, Every 15 Minutes, the Grim Reaper entered classrooms to take a student, symbolizing a life lost. Uniformed officers entered to deliver the news to each class. Each of these students had a headstone placed on the lawn next to the PAC, complete with their name, photo, and flowers. At lunch, in front of the gym on Thursday, students witnessed a shocking simulated car crash. Wes Trevino, Matty Schaefer, and Colby Letterman were pronounced dead at the scene while Jordan Taylor, the impaired driver, was arrested. Paramedics, firefighters, and an ambulance responded, making it feel incredibly real. The quote-unquote "living dead" students formed a perimeter around the scene as well. Friday's assembly brought everything together. Focus Studios premiered a moving short film showing the emotional fallout of a drunk-driving accident, featuring students as victims, grieving families, and even jail scenes. It was raw and heartbreaking. Some students from Focus Studios even pulled an all-nighter to finish editing the film. Guest speakers shared personal experiences, reminding us that these tragedies are real and very preventable. What struck me most is how easily it could have been avoided if someone just had, just said no, as well as the access to ride-share in today's society. Although this may have been a two-day event on campus, there is still a victim to drunk-driving every 15 minutes. This excellent program is a stepping stone in stopping this by spreading awareness to those who need it most, the students in this great district that will help guide our world. Next, I would like to highlight one of the most behind-the-scenes yet impactful classes on campus, our yearbook team. This dedicated group of 23 students, including 22 girls and one brave guy, Ben, worked tirelessly all year to create a 525-page yearbook from scratch. Led by Miss of March, who also teaches Principles of Geometry, the class follows a daily agenda and tackles everything from professional email writing to mastering Photoshop, spreadsheets, and digital design. They started the year with a ladder, a spreadsheet that outlines all the pages of the yearbook, which they have divided amongst themselves based off personal interests. Most students worked in pairs, taking on deadlines that hit six times a year. When I visited them, they were deep in the indexing phase, matching names and fun nicknames, or mugs with student photos, and ensuring accuracy through data pulled from Ares and the school's internal roster nicknamed the Stalker Book. They cross-checked every name to make sure students were correctly included, even collaborating with ASB to filter club rosters and coordinate group photos. Their work has gone far beyond the classroom. Students in yearbook walk around campus, write call slips, and meet students at lunch to ensure representation. They work patiently with teachers' schedules and overcome the pressure of creating a product people had already paid for before it even existed. Despite all their hard work, they find joy in the process. While people often assume the yearbook is professionally made, every page, every photo, and every caption is proudly created by students. Now let me shine a spotlight on our song and cheer programs, who recently had their expedition, last chance they got to show off their routines. The evening began with a high-energy performance from our JV song team, followed by the Varsity Song Team, who proudly hold the title of Division Media National Champions. They performed a dynamic mashup of classic and modern hits from ACDC's TNT to Katy Perry's Firework in their sleek black-and-white outfits. Their jazz and palm teams' routines showcased the talent and precision they built through hours of practice. Co-captains Shelby Grossfield and Angelina Jallandoni led team with strength, passion, and grace all year long. The mini-palm team from On Stage Dance Studio, where many of our current athletes got their start, wowed the crowd in red and white, while even the younger cheerleaders from Rise Up, dressed in teal and blue, brought contagious spirit to the stage. JV Cheer followed with an impressive routine, fresh off their fourth-place finish at Nationals in the Small Advanced category. The evening closed with a powerful performance from our Division One Runner-Ups, Varsity Cheer Team, coached by Katie Shetland and led by captains Brynley Guston and Ava Teague. At the end of the night, the seniors held a final private stunt as a personal goodbye. Additionally, each senior was honored with a video tribute, flowers, and heartfelt messages. From chants like "Let's Go Los Al" to "Get Loud For Los Al," this program truly left it all on the floor this season. It's not every day a high school's chamber orchestra dares to perform all five movements of Griegs Holberg's Suite, but that's exactly what Los Al's orchestra did this year, and they pulled it off brilliantly. Since the start of the year, the ensemble has been preparing for this ambitious piece, and for the first time ever, they performed the entire suite in a professional concert hall setting. Under the director, under the direction of Justin Padilla and led by concert master Aubrey An, the orchestra delivered a 20- to 25-minute performance that earned them the top honor of unanimous masteries, a title awarded when both judges give a perfect score. The day began with students departing campus at 11:00 a.m. on a charter bus provided by the orchestra boosters. Before the performance, they enjoyed lunch from In-N-Out outside the hall, keeping spirits high and energy-focused. Afterwards, they took to their own tradition of section photos, group pictures with friends, and the sweet satisfaction of knowing they had just made a masterful performance. Behind the scenes, a student leadership team, including President, Vice President, Secretary, and Ambassador, worked to keep the orchestra's needs met and maintain strong communication with the boosters. What made this performance stand out wasn't just the technical difficulty of the piece, it was the students' commitment to practicing both in class and at home. Their dedication paid off with a standing ovation, countless accolades, and a memory that has defined their year. The gamble of playing all five movements of Holberg Suite, absolutely worth it. Where else can you find a senior playing piano tiles with their bare feet, Louis Armstrong impersonation, and a surprise appearance from someone's grandma, all in one night? Only at the Los Alamos High School's second-ever Top Griffin competition, organized by senior class presidents Emily and Matty Schaefer, the event brought together a variety of hilarious, heartfelt, and downright bizarre talents. Hosted in the PAC, the audience was packed with students and a few proud parents, all eager to see what their classmates had in store. Open to any senior, the competition invited performers to showcase their special talents in front of a panel of judges, which was made up of ASB representatives from other schools, some traveling as far as San Clemente to attend. Each act had the chance to charm not only the judges, but also the crowd with the help of personal escorts and creative video presentations. Besides, besides the acts, each contestant also had the opportunity to sway the judges with a pre-recorded funny video they made of themselves. One standout moment came from Jayden Bober, who won over everyone by bringing his grandmother as his escort, an unexpected move that instantly captured hearts. His mix of sentimental charm and comedic sabotage of his house band as his main act had the audience in stitches and helped him secure the title of Top Griffin. The event ran for about two hours, with act after act delivering surprises, laughs, and unforgettable moments. It wasn't just a talent show, it was a celebration of personality, creativity, and school spirit. Events like this are what make Los Al truly one of a kind. Here's a new segment for you all to enjoy. Coming 2025, our high school is set to open a state-of-the-art gymnasium. After attending a CBOC meeting on March 19th with Dr. Wastright and Ms. Schnurr, I had the privilege of seeing the future of Los Al athletics firsthand. The meeting took place in one of the school's conference rooms, cookies included, of course, and after taking attendance, we were guided to the construction site. Outfitted with hard hats and neon safety vests, we stepped behind the fences and cones into what will soon become one of the most impressive athletic facilities and awe any visitor. The new gym will add over 30,000 square feet of additional space, tripling the number of basketball courts from one to three. It will also include five team rooms, dedicated storage areas, filming capabilities, AV integration, digital scoring, and even a smart board for coaching and game strategy. Sleek wooden floors with a Griffin centerpiece will give the court a signature finish, while towering retractable blinds will allow multiple games or practices to take place at once, dividing the courts up. Bleacher capacity is being massively upgraded as well, with separate sides for home and visitors, fitting around 2,000 people combined. The gym will also include a full-service concession area, serving both the gym and track and field, gendered and single occupancy restrooms, and cutting-edge weight-training facilities. This construction isn't just for show, it's necessary. Currently, many of our sports teams must practice off-campus or during odd hours due to overcrowding. This expansion will finally meet the growing demand and provide athletes with the facilities they deserve. And with modern projectors built in for live game replays, this gym won't just be new, it will be next level. Los Al is building something truly special, and the future is looking even brighter for Griffin athletics. Finally, let me introduce to you all a Griffin who may be a little shy in the classroom at times, but in reality is a ray of sunshine when talking to her, Mira Zakaius. Mira started out at McGaw Elementary and then attended Oak Middle School. Mira has had a load of unique passions, such as dance Kathak, hopefully I'm pronouncing that right, a classical dance from northern India. Besides dancing Kathak, she also dedicates time to playing violin, baking, and reading. Her passion for violin specifically has led Mira to join our excellent orchestra ensemble, which I mentioned previously in my presentation. Her favorite memory with the orchestra specifically is when they made a trip to Disneyland and performed there. At the same time, Mira is involved in loads of activities on campus as well. She's a dedicated member of the Women's Rights Club, Science Olympiad, French Honor Society, and National Honor Society. Throughout all her time in this district, Mira's favorite memory was when she went on a beach day in fifth grade, and also the Welcome Back dance the high school had when she was a freshman. After high school, Mira is planning to attend UC Berkeley, where she will be studying chemical biology and pursue pharmaceutical research. She is also super excited about living on her own and guiding her own path while meeting new people and discovering her two passions. The main downside of leaving home for her, of course, are family, friends, and also her two cats, Marion and Pippin, who she loves. Mira has accomplished so much as a Griffin, and I'm sure her hard-working and positive spirit will place her in a solid future. And with that, I would like to open the floor to any questions or comments from the board.
Do you know if Top Griffin is what used to be referred to as Mr. Griffin?
Yes, so it used to be referred to as Mr. Griffin. It got changed last year to Top Griffin, just for more inclusivity, and we've had many more people interested in it now.
That is awesome, and I'm so glad that you showed the gym. I was just saying that I was there yesterday, and literally looking at it brings tears to my, tears to my eyes. It's going to be really magnificent. Thank you, Joseph.
I almost want to stay here another year for that.
Joseph, I have no questions because the report was magnificent, but I just wanted to let everybody know that Joseph is the Senior of the Month at Los Al High School.
Thank you.
And he's weighted down with heavy options. He's gotten into major universities across the country, so we're, we're going to be very proud of this Griffin. He's amazing. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you so much. Pleasure.
Now we will move to our superintendent's report, Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, Joseph, on Senior of the Month. I'm not sure what took them so long, but really proud that they were able to recognize you for that. And I love how you highlighted the opportunity. Our students get so many amazing opportunities, and for our band students, our orchestra students who went to Seegerstrom to be able to perform, you know, that's such a huge and special accomplishment. It reminds me of how sometime, every year, our baseball team is able to play at Angel Stadium and to be able to see, you know, on a professional level. Same thing for our, our musicians, to be able to play at such a professional level at Seegerstrom Theater is, is really impressive. So, um, tonight, I want to focus, I want to just recognize some of our Rock Stars of the Month from February. We got to recognize Ms. Suzanne McGeldry, who's our music teacher at two of our elementary schools, and certainly a key music teacher who really helps put on the All District Choral Festival. And then in our classified Rock Star of the Month was Anna Cripps, who works in business services and fiscal services. And as you know, we've been without a director. We just introduced Tim, our new director, at the, at our workshop this afternoon. But we could not have gotten through our second interim report without the dedication and expertise and all the attention, special attention, time, and level of detail that Anna did to support, and really all of the Fiscal Services Department. So we're proud to be able to recognize our Rock Stars of the Month. We're recognizing our next month's coming up this week, so stay tuned. And then the last, on Monday last night, and then again next Monday, we had, we have our All District Band last night, and next Monday at 6:00 p.m., we have our All District Orchestra Festival, right at the Los Alamos High School inside the gymnasium. It was a wonderful evening and such a nice progression. And what I love about our All District Choral, or whether it's our All District Band and Orchestra, is you really see the growth of our music programs across a unified district, and that's such a celebration of growth, of passion, and of talent, and of creativity. And none of that would be possible without exceptional teachers who really go above and beyond to kind of nurture our students. And for the first time, last night, we had our elementary music teachers, who were also part of the All District Choral, because now embedded and part of the music instruction is general instruments as well. And so they had their boom whackers and the drums and the recorders. And so it was just a really fun night. And if you missed it, you have another opportunity next Monday, April 14th at 6:00 p.m. Come out and help us celebrate such exceptional talent. And thank you to Ed Services and Melissa Davis, who really helps organize and make this possible, along with all of our, our band and music staff. And then I won't share a lot about this because Joseph already did, but I really want to just give a shout out to the different organizations that helped make this possible. The Every 15 Minutes program is really a collaboration of so many different agencies coming together to try to help our youth make really good choices and to think about decisions that they make when, when they are faced with having to make decisions about, do they drive intoxicated? And intoxication is not just alcohol, it can also be under, under any other type of impairment through drugs, et cetera. And it's really a partnership with the Youth Center, with the Seal Beach Lions, with the CHP, Los Alamos Police Department. We had the Coroner's Office, the Orange County District Attorney's Office, the West Minister Superior Court. It's so many different agencies coming together to really try to impart a really moving experience. And if you haven't had a chance to see the, our student film, Focus Studios, it brought tears to your eyes. They, they are students who created the film for the Student Assembly, because this is a two-day, they do a crash scene on, on one of the days, and then Student Assemblies. Our Focus Studios students who put on that video, and even our orchestra, I think, recorded some of the music in the video as well. It, it was certainly like a music festival or a film festival-worthy award. So they did a spectacular job. And thank you to all our administrators who really, and ASB, who really puts this all together to impact decision-making and mature decisions for our students. And then I tried to wear a little bit of a purple tie tonight, because we're so fortunate that we have, we're blessed to serve a community who really embraces our military. And as you know, we have two bases within our district property. Almost 47% of our district boundaries is made up by, by the two military bases. And so we have, I think it's well over 500 families who are military, who have students enrolled in our school district, who have, who are connected in some form by having a parent within the military. And so April is often known as the month of the military child, and one of the symbolisms of that is wearing purple. But I want to say that really the purpose of this is April's designated, it's a really time to honor the sacrifice that, that our military families make. Not, it's not just those who go over and serve in the military, it's the impact that it has on, on family members, dependent children as well. And so Purple Up is a day where we invite students and staff to wear purple. That is on April 18th. But the, and the purpose of the military child is to raise awareness about the unique challenges and experiences faced by military children, including, and we see this so frequently, is that the frequent relocations that families have to completely be uprooted, that the deployments and changes in schools and support network. Some of our students, this, we might be already, and they might be in the elementary, and this might be their fifth school already. And so we really want to acknowledge the important work and the impact that it has on them. So our schools do have a variety of activities. I won't go over all of them, but we just want to make sure that we are honoring and recognizing all of our children who, families are part of the military, and we want to let you know that we see you and we thank you, and we thank your family for their incredible service to this country and to all of our freedoms. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Pulver. We now move to, on to board communication. Mrs. Partizani, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Well, good evening. It's been another busy month of achievements across Los Alamos Unified School District. And in the interest of time, I'd like to highlight one key activity for your information. So last week, I, along with Dr. Pulver and some members of the district leadership, had a very productive and informative meeting with the Orange County Department of Education on the topic of career technical training. We discussed expanding career pathway opportunities along with student ambassador involvement here at Los Al, and they shared a lot of great learnings from other districts, many resources that other districts are, are using that we can tap into as we look to continue to grow our programs. But to that end, I'd like to give a shout out to our CTE team, namely, Mrs. Marian Schaefer, Dr. Dan Bennett, and Mrs. Lillian Patterson-Ford for their outstanding work in advancing CTE. Mrs. Kathy Boyd, who is the Director of the Orange County Department of Education, commended our team for increasing the percentage of students in grades seven to 12 who are enrolled in CTE programs by 10.89%. That is huge. It's actually the largest that the Orange County has seen in the, from the year 2022 to 23, 2022, '23 school year to '23, '24 school year. So I just really thought that this is such a powerful testament to our team's efforts and their partnership and their commitment to elevate our students' educational experience. And I really wanted to take a moment to highlight that and to encourage you to stay tuned. There's a lot of great work that's coming out of that department, and, and I, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out. So thank you.
Mrs. Hill?
Thank you very much. And just a couple of quick things as they relate to how we set our goals for our district and, and how that is demonstrated. And so one event that I had the opportunity to go to was the LAHS Interact Talent Show. And Interact is the group that is the student-led group for Rotary with, at our high school. And so it is a partnership, it is a community partnership with our Rotary Club. Dr. Pulver, I believe, is Secretary of our Rotary Club. And so we have students who really learn about what it means to be philanthropic and to give back and to be of service and to be of service first. And so they put on this very funny talent show and to raise funds for their project. And so it was a very wonderful evening, and I really appreciate their leader as well. And, and all of the, there were some, also some staff that performed, which I thought was really very funny. But Pauline Graham Shaw leads that club at the high school, so it was wonderful. Also did several walkthroughs and just two observations from those is, one, I really, we have a new program that has come from Yale that is going into all of our classrooms, and it's called Ruler. And it was so amazing to see it in almost every room we are in. And what Ruler is about is our social-emotional learning. And so, as you know, we all, we are very blessed to have well centers on every one of our campuses. But now, not just at our, in our well center, or not just in pull-outs or push-ins, we have them in the classroom as part of the curriculum. And earlier today, when we had LAE here, they were also talking about, Mrs. Padilla was also talking about sharing that with the parents, so that the parents understood the common language that was being used with, with their students as well, about how they felt and what their emotions were and where they were on a mood meter. And so I just am really grateful to see that across the board. And also, really, a parody in, in learning in every one of our classrooms. I see best practices, I see classes completely aligned, doing the same projects. You walk into a second-grade classroom, and that, we want our schools to have a lot of character, but they also, having that alignment in what is being taught, really helps as they matriculate, I always have problems with that word, up to our middle schools and then to our high school. And it's really important. It's really, really important. And I'm just grateful to all of our staff for getting on board and all of the teachers who have great, great grade-level groups that really work together to make sure that these things happen for our students. And that really aligns with, obviously, our first goal, which is academics. Thank you.
Mr. Forehand? Sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Tomorrow night, I'm the rep to the Board's, Selpa Board, who was a special ed board, and we're going to celebrate some of our staff that were nominated. And the staff, what caught my attention mostly was it's all kinds of staff that support our kids with special needs, including the teachers, Sarah Lee, teacher at Hopkinson, but Matt McDonald, the custodian at Hopkinson, Imelda and Corinna, who are cafeteria workers at Rosmore, who take on our special ed kids and give them jobs. And then even our city, Ms. Noda is going to be honored for the event she got together with Grace and her group and sponsored last fall. So it'll be a nice evening and celebration. I'm going to shout out the staff who take our fourth graders to Sacramento, that's a big job, to the Oak and McCullough staff for kicking off our open house season. I want to highlight Junior at Los Al High, Yara, who is bringing leadership, teaching a leadership, the attributes of leadership, and bringing Level Up, it's called Level Up, to our middle schoolers. So I got to see them in action. And Dr. Pulver highlighted Every 15 Minutes, and as a member of the Youth Center Board of Directors, I was given a list of names, specific names, but I think you've highlighted everyone there, so I think we got our job done. But I wanted to talk about Ara, Dane, Ryland, Emma, and Ellie, who spoke at this assembly as students to the whole staff, to the whole student body, and they just did a wonderful job. They read letters that they would have left to their families. I've got to travel to Nashville, as many know, but I think what I've learned is that all the chaperones that attend these events have a special place in heaven, because that's a job to chaperone. I wanted to highlight Joseph again, and Chloe, I think they're co-presidents of the Kindness Club, but I got to see Joseph talking about what is gratitude. And I thought, here's our kids talking to each other about gratitude and what it means. And I think you almost collected 1,000 books. I haven't got the final total for the fire victims, so thank you. And then I wanted to end. And then I wanted to end, as I always do with a student, this is a seventh grader at Oak, he's part of their choir, and his name is Jack. And at Extravaganza, which was actually almost a month ago, Jack noticed after their performance, another boy from another choir came up to the boys choir at Oak, and he was the only boy in his choir from his school, wherever that was. And Jack, to include him, took off his performing Hawaiian shirt and gave it to the boy. And I just thought, does that say a lot about our kids or what? Just inclusion, making everybody feel a part. So, thank you. It's been, our kids are incredible.
Thank you. Mr. Bragman?
Thank you very much. Since our last meeting, it has continued to be fun and busy. It's going to ramp up. I know, like Chris just mentioned, Oak and McAuliffe kicked off our open houses. I had an unbelievable time in McAuliffe. I know a lot of our staff is out there. Thank you for hosting an amazing event. It started with us listening to jazz and visiting classes, and I tell you that the campus was truly alive. I mean, if you could have that much energy and bottle it up, everyone would and should come to our schools. It was amazing. I know Oak must have been exactly the same. I saw performances on video of the choir and people performing, but it was great. And people get tired of me saying this, but as a fifth grade dad, it makes me even more excited to send my daughter to your school. And so it makes me really confident to know that this is the setting that our kids are going to go to Oak or McAuliffe, and they're going to have great success. And there were fifth grade parents sneaking around. If you didn't know it, we saw them. I recognized some of them, and they didn't have any middle schoolers, but they were scoping it out and checking you guys out too. So, great job, really. And it does kick off a very hectic week of open houses. I know board members and staff are going to be visiting. We have some more visiting this week and next week, so it's just an exciting time. And I'd say for anyone that hasn't visited other campuses, it's a great opportunity to just go and see the cool things. We talked about with LAE earlier, it's a great time to see things that are being modeled that you can bring and replicate from campus to campus and have ideas. So, don't pay teachers, pay teachers, visit our own teachers. That might be a great way to do it. I also was lucky enough to visit Lee and McAuliffe the past few weeks. Wonderful just to see those campuses alive. And I just say, we had, I think, our first walkthrough of Lee on a Friday. It was my first Friday walkthrough, and just the energy on a Friday is different. So I hope to, again, like, just continue to do these walkthroughs and learn and take the best and brightest of what we learned there, bring them back here and share them out with the rest of the team. We know that so many of our schools hold big fundraisers, and we heard about LAE earlier and the $80,000, and this is not a competition, because what I think it is really, is strong to show is that all of our parents come together in different ways. I know I was lucky enough to be able to attend McAuliffe's, the event, which is a Project Seek fundraiser that funds the staffing of our STEM and arts teachers. As of today, when I looked, and they're doing their kind of final run of auction items, there were up to $160,000 raised. And so I just think, show the investment that our community is putting into our schools, make sure that we have one-of-a-kind programs, that we go above and beyond. It's what differentiates us from other districts. It's why parents like me move to this community. And so I just continue to say thank you to our parents, our staff, our community members, staff members, board members that are doing that. It really takes village, and you can see we're moving mountains the way we're doing that. So, so proud of that. I know Weaver, I think, had their event in the past couple of weeks. LAE did, I think Rossmore. There's a lot of events going on with different names and different themes, but it's just amazing to see what our community does when they come together to unite for our kids. So I appreciate everyone. It's going to be a busy week or two before spring break, so staff, you're almost there. And we appreciate you, but I, thanks again. This is great. This is fun.
Thank you, Matt. So, first of all, I want to congratulate Rossmore School for getting California Distinguished School, and, yes. And all of our campuses are award-winning, and that's because of the incredible administration, teachers, staff, and the families who support students who are always engaged and excited about what's provided for them. So, thank you to the schools out here today with us, but congratulations to Rossmore. Music has been wonderful in the community. Last night's all band concert was so cute, because they had the Youth Center there with playing, I'm not sure what, but it was so cute, all the way up to our star jazz and best bands from the high school. But I think the biggest and best part of that night for me is the very end, because every year, they traditionally, everybody gets to play all the bands and they do Star Wars. And literally, it is so powerful. I filmed it last night and sent it to my son, and he didn't really believe it was the high school, but he recognized the gym. But what I will say is that it literally raised the roof. So, thank you to all the music directors who do so much for our children and just go the extra mile every single day. Stan and I loved the, it was called Spotlight Havana Nights. It was our first experience with a whole evening of Cuban jazz, which was absolutely wonderful. The kids were so excited, it was the middle school and high school jazz bands, and the kids were so excited to be performing, and so many of them got opportunities to do short solos, which has to be such a moment of pride for parents. But where the biggest smiles came was when our students got to play with, I'll have to get, this is multi-Grammy Award winner Poncho Sanchez and multi-Grammy nominated Francisco Torres, who played with them and expressed their passion for music with them, literally dancing on the stage. But they'd spent a couple days before mentoring the students and being with them. So I just am so grateful for the opportunities and the generosity of the people in our communities and beyond. I went to parent night for the junior parents, parents of juniors who were getting ready to do college applications. I'm telling you, I'm so thankful, I'm old. It was absolutely overwhelming. I don't know how my son ever got to go to college, because I can't believe that I did any of the things right. But it is a process, and our school district provides a lot of opportunities to follow the steps. They learned about the essays, they learned about grants, they learned about tuition and what they can do to find support. But more of that will be coming this summer for anyone who has a junior in high school looking to write those incredible applications. So I thank Emily Letterman and her whole team who put this on, and they brought in a professional advisor. It was a great night, but once again, I'm very happy I don't have anyone going to college. As a ROP representative to the North Orange County ROP Board of Trustees, I did miss open house, which was sad for me, but I attended the annual Celebration of Success ceremony. And this is honoring ROP students from six districts. And Dr. David Platt, Assistant Principal from LaSalle, joined me as our district representatives, honoring two of our students from Ryan Weatherman's incredible ROP Emergency Response and Fire Technology classes. That program just won a national award. It's phenomenal. If you get a chance, go by the high school and see, they literally have an ambulance inside the classroom that is exactly like they would experience if they were in an ambulance out on the streets. But our two winners were Karina Velez, she's a 12th grader, and she is Los Alamos Unified School District's ROP Student of the Year, which is quite an accomplishment. Our second winner of an award was Rio Garland, he's a 12th grader, and he got the Dolores Sutter Crupnik Award, and he, both of them received $1,000 scholarships and were honored in this beautiful celebration. These two are outstanding young people who are recognized for displaying dedication to mastering the knowledge and skills necessary to being successful in their fields, modeling leadership and a spirit of collaboration, and working diligently toward their personal visions of the future as individuals dedicated to serving their community. And listening to the, when they brought up each student from every district, the identification of the reasons for their being chosen, these, I mean, it would give you so much hope for the future to know how truly accomplished young people are going out, that will be going out into our world and become our leaders. I wanted to also just mention about every 15 minutes, I got to go to the simulation on Thursday where the crash was simulated, and want to echo the thanks to our first responders. There were fire trucks, ambulances, the real tragedy, literally a forest lawn, mortician came. It was so real, police officers, they all came and gave their mourning to making this very real. Literally carved, literally removed the roof of one car with the jaws of life. It was their students' lunch, and they were stone quiet, completely taken by what was going on. Then at the assembly the next day was one of the hardest performances, one of the hardest performances assemblies I've attended. I want to thank, there's some specific people, and Lena Lumi, who's the head of the Youth Center and was very much a part of making this happen, obviously, she's the kind of person who doesn't want thanks herself, but she asked us to thank the Seal Beach Lions Club, the Youth Center, individuals whose names need to be called out for their dedication, Scott Newton, Helen Harlan, Nathan Burge, Blake Hyppock, Kami Hendricks, so a lot of these are our staff, Connor Brown, Karavina, Emily Letterman, Jody Bricki, and Carla Loomis. And what I will say is, even for myself, I mean, it was hard to have a dry eye. Mr. Schaefer, whose daughter was one of them who was supposedly killed in the accident, spoke to her in the assembly, and it was totally from the heart, and you could tell how he suffered to even write that speech, because he sobbed. He sobbed. It was absolutely the most impactful moment I've experienced in any kind of presentation. And our junior and senior class literally spilled out of the bleachers and were sitting on the floor. They didn't move. And the one mantra that was given to them was, if you drink, if you drive distracted, you're saying it's okay to kill somebody. And that sounds so drastic, but it's so powerful that I, myself, going to dinner, said, no, I'm not having that glass of wine. We don't know what can happen in the next second of a poor decision, and that was made very clear to our kids. So I deeply thank everyone involved in that, and I think if you know a junior, if you know anyone at the high school, ask them what they thought about it, because every child I've talked to has been deeply impacted. Mrs. Hill, you wanted to say something?
I'm sorry, I just, really quickly, some of you may know that I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit, it's called Pathways to Independence. And we were started by a former principal from Los Alamos. He was the principal that, when we used to have a continuation high school laurel, and his name is Dave Bishop, and he passed away on Sunday. And so I just wanted to make sure if anybody was aware of Mr. Bishop and the community, to let them know that he has gone to rest. And I just am really appreciative of the work that he has done with Pathways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill, for saying that. I'm looking out at the crowd, and there are people in the crowd who were on staff with Dave. And I will say, I'm so glad you brought that up, because nobody deserves more respect than he does. I'm terrified of interviews, and he called me up when I was just getting my, applying for a job here in the district way back in 1991, and said, come on over, Marla, we're going to practice. And that was the kind of person that he was. And then he ultimately drafted me onto the Pathways Board, which she leads with such love, passion, and brilliance. And I did that until my father got too sick, but I learned so much from that man, and I know he's in heaven, and he has left an incredible legacy. So, thank you so much. We're now going to go on to some very special presentations. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, yeah, no, I was going to, so we're going to call on Dr. Weeswright to lead these presentations.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President, school board members of the Los Alamos Unified, particularly McAuliffe and Oak Communities. Welcome tonight. We're super excited to recognize two very special employees, and I believe we're going to be starting by announcing, introducing, and then we have some people to say some nice things about our Teacher of the Year. So please come on up, Ms. Lori Avalos. So Ms. Avalos was selected from among all of our teachers in Los Alamos Unified, and as we all know, we're so grateful and fortunate to work in a place with outstanding teachers. But Ms. Avalos, I have had the privilege of working alongside as a principal, and in my role as HR for the last couple of years as our lead negotiator, and I don't want to steal what everybody else is going to say, but I do truly believe that she's incredible. And so we are really grateful to have her representing our district. We're really grateful to have you working with our kids every day. But I'm not the only one that has things to say tonight. So, Dr. Pulver, Mrs. Davidson, and I believe Mr. Quartermarsh, come on up.
You're going to have to endure a lot of us talking really lovely things about you, Lori. And so as Ryan shared, you know, we have such spectacular teachers who go above and beyond each and every single day for our students. And when you think about it, we have over 400 teachers, and we, as a district, through the Orange County Teacher of the Year program, only get to recognize one. And I think Lori certainly deserves to be recognized as our District Teacher of the Year, the County Teacher of the Year, and I think she deserves to be the State Teacher of the Year. She's really that phenomenal, as you get to know the exceptional individual that she is. And I think if, when you get to know Lori, you see that really, her impact extends beyond the classroom walls. Every single student that she interacts with is seen, is valued, and loved, and nurtured. She's one of those individuals who, one of those rare teachers, I think, who just instinctively knows to run to students that need her the most. And we are just so fortunate to be able to have her part of our team. I know you probably can't tell, she looks like she's like 12, only been with our district for 12 years, but no, she's actually been with us for over 36 years in so many different amazing ways. Lori started off in extended daycare and then worked in a number of different, noon duty, lunch supervision, if you would, she worked in the media center, and then really landed as an instructional teacher at one of our elementary schools. So over 36 years, she's been with us. She started off, I believe, both at LAE and started the McAuliffe outpost, was a teacher at Hopkinson Elementary for years. And Lori is one of those teachers who was trained in reading recovery. And if you don't know what a reading recovery teacher is, is really, she was trained in many numerous research-based instructional strategies of how to help struggling readers. And that really has always been a gift of hers, where eventually she became a learning specialist at Hopkinson Elementary, providing targeted and ongoing support to students who really need her the most. And that's what I think kind of is this ongoing philosophy. Eventually, in 2000, I think it was 14 or so, give or take, she landed at McAuliffe Middle School. And in that role, what brought her from elementary as a trained reading recovery teacher to McAuliffe was a pilot that the district, to really help some of our most struggling readers at middle school. And so she pioneered a double-block ELA course for below-grade level students in trying to find ways how to not only impact their skill development, but really just their love and their, for reading, their love for learning, and their self-efficacy, their belief in themselves that they, even if they're struggling, that they can overcome. And so I just think she has this unwavering belief in every single child's potential. And we are so blessed that she is part of our district and has been with us for so long. As a mother of kids herself, she has the same dreams for her kids as she does for her students. And we are just here to recognize this exceptional individual. Thank you, Lori, for all that you've done, for the countless lives that you have touched of our students throughout these 36 years. Eddie, you're up.
President Davidson, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Pulver and Executive Cabinet, thank you for this opportunity to speak about this amazing human being. It's always awkward to speak to somebody who's behind you. Lori, if you want to go stand in the center so everybody can see you, you're more than welcome to. So, as many of you know, I'm very proud of my Los Alamos through and through. I wear that badge with pride, and I think I'm really cool because of it. And then I met Lori two years ago, and really, the entire Avalos family just puts me to shame as far as their commitment to this district and what they've given as a family and as educators. So I share that because I think it's such a cool experience and a wonderful moment that you have somebody who grew up in our community, who went to our schools, who gave back over 36 years of their life to those kids, and they get recognized as a District Teacher of the Year. I think that's just an amazing full circle story, and I'm so glad to be part of that journey. In the classroom, there's nobody better, hence Teacher of the Year. hence Teacher of the Year. She oftentimes will take on some of the more difficult assignments. And she does it with grace, and she does it with love. Anytime you walk into her classroom, kids are smiling, they're happy, they're learning, which is always the key. And she puts up with a lot of me coming by during those moments to ask her questions like, hey, so I have this idea. What do you think about it? And she will give honest feedback. I try not to interrupt learning as much as possible. Unfortunately, her classroom is right by the main office. And so as I walk back to my office, she's always outside greeting kids. And so I just take advantage of that. And we will oftentimes talk. And I've learned so much from you, Lori, in my two years here at McAuliffe about what it means to be a professional, what it means to be an educator, what it means to be an Eagle. Dr. Pulver referenced a lot of the positions that she has. One that you don't necessarily know is she is the unofficial Los Alamos Unified historian. It comes in very handy. She can provide any details about anything that's ever happened since whatever year that was. And I want to just end by saying, of all those things, I think the one thing that I'm most proud of is the amount of hats that you wear for so many people and the weight that you shoulder at so many different times, and how you do that with grace and how you do that with love. I've been the recipient of those moments. And I know that our staff feels the same way. If you look out into the crowd, there's so many familiar faces that love you and think of you so highly. I've never worked with an educator who is as respected and as loved as you are. And I truly, truly mean that. And I think the participation here this evening by your colleagues speaks volumes to who you are, not only as an educator, but as a mother and a husband, and just simply as a person. We love you, you're so deserving. Thank you for letting me be a part of your journey. I look forward to many, many more years together. Many, many more years. But really, Lori, congratulations on being the district teacher of the year. You're absolutely loved.
Sorry, darling. Okay, so a lot's already been said. But what I have to talk about is the heart of this woman. I have had the privilege of knowing Lori. We student-taught at the same time. Yes, she was a youngster. Yes, I was a late bloomer. But my master teacher, B. Tamo, and some of you remember B., said to me, Marla, you will get a job if there's two positions, because nobody is going to beat Lori. She's so loved and respected at such a young age. And I had the great fortune of spending the last few years at McAuliffe with Lori being my next-door neighbor. And all along the way, this woman has cared and nurtured and loved not only her students, but every person in her life, including all of us. I could walk into her classroom, always had the most wonderful fresh air smell, which is hard in middle school. And every wall is covered with student work, beautifully presented. Like, on her desks are all these little flowers and things that welcome students. She makes it their home. She makes it a place where they feel loved and cherished, and most of all, they feel believed in. And she's always the one who will take that student. She's always the one who will love that student. And for me, in my life, I have never known anyone with a more gigantic heart, more compassion, always could be in difficult circumstances personally, but would say to you, oh, this isn't about me. Tell me what's going on in your life. How can I help you? What can I do for you? Our schools are communities. They're not just campuses. And they're communities. And those communities are built by wonderful human beings like Lori. And I, in my life, say, thank you, God, for giving me this friendship and giving me this partner. And I love you dearly. This is an honor you so deserve. And yes, I think you should go all the way to DC. So, love you. And I get to present you with... You get this little bobble, Lori. This is a celebration of you. And I think it's beautiful.
Oh, my gosh, that's gorgeous.
We love you dearly.
Thank you very much. Oh, even better? All right.
The Board of Education went all the way to the Olympic Committee to get a gold medal, because you are the best. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, yes, is behind me. Esteemed members of the board, Dr. Pulver, District Cabinet, and colleagues and guests. First, I want to express my deepest gratitude for this incredible honor. To be recognized as the Los Alamos Unified Teacher of the Year is truly humbling. When I first began my teaching career, I never imagined standing here in front of you today. What started as a passion for helping students learn and grow has evolved into something far greater than I could have anticipated. This award is not just a reflection of my work, but of the collaborative efforts of my colleagues, the support of my students and their families, and the encouragement of my personal family. Education was always in my family. My great-grandmother was president of the Board of Education of Compton, California. And my grandmother was a high school history teacher. My mom began her career teaching at Janie P. Abbott School in Compton, which is a school that was named after my great-grandmother and is still open today. Then she completed her career here in Los Alamos at Rush and Lee, and then Rossmore Elementary. I recently read a quote that said, "A great teacher is a product of a great teacher that believed in them." My career is a success because of the teachers that had confidence in me and an understanding of my needs. The highlight of my elementary years was Mrs. Linda Lee. She saw things in me that no other teacher had discovered. And she gave me the confidence to believe in myself. While attending junior high, Mr. Jack Schlatter harvested a talent in me that I didn't know existed. High school was where I met Dr. Jim Cross and Mr. Walt Howenstein. Both of these educators made me feel seen and understood and capable of doing my best work. I knew that if I was going to teach, Dr. Cross was going to be the one that I wanted to strive to become. My passion for this career began while I worked at Kids Corner at LAE, where Mrs. Roberta Tuggel had faith in me. She's the reason that I took a job here. I then student-taught with Mrs. Elise Ulrich and Miss Vicki Newman, who was my second-grade teacher. When I was hired to teach at LAE the same year that Mrs. Marla Davidson was hired at Rossmore, I spent two of the most, I was sent two of the most important messages in my career that are proudly displayed in my classroom today. A card and flowers from Mrs. Linda Lee and a letter with a poster from Dr. Jim Cross. They both believed in me, were proud of me, and reminded me of my why. I struggled in school with reading and did a great job of allowing it to damage my confidence. These educators made me into the mentor of students that I am today. It became clear that I not only wanted to teach, but I wanted to reach and teach those that struggled, just as I had done. And to be the teacher that would build that same confidence in my students. I'm proud to say that I've stayed connected with some former students that have become teachers or are applying for positions. Each of them have said that they wanted to teach because of the confidence and skills that they had developed. That is the reason that I do my job. I would like to take a moment to thank my students, past and present. You inspire me every single day. Your curiosity, your energy, your resilience push me to be a better teacher. And for that, I'm endlessly grateful. Watching you grow, both academically and personally, is the greatest reward I could ever receive. I also want to acknowledge my fellow educators. This profession is filled with so many passionate, dedicated, and talented individuals. We all share the same goal, to make a positive impact on the lives of students. It's an honor to work alongside with such incredible people who inspire me every single day. This award is a testament to the strength and commitment of every teacher who dedicates their heart and soul to students. For 38 years, I have surrounded myself with the most successful and passionate educators anywhere. Several of my coworkers have become extended family to me. You are the ones that have challenged me to continue to grow and build my skills and daily remind me of my why. Thank you to the administration and to our district for your support and for providing me with resources and opportunities to continue to grow as an educator. The support for me with a variety of positions, committees, curriculum writing, and being a master teacher demonstrated your trust and your value in me. Thank you for trusting me with my first teaching experience that led me to my husband. That was the greatest gift I have ever received. I also want to thank this district for educating me, as well as my husband and our children. Lastly, I must extend my heartfelt thanks to my family for their unwavering love, understanding, and constant encouragement. Your support allows me to value my students and to refine my craft. I couldn't do this without you. Teaching is more than a job for me. It's a calling. It's about shaping the future, one student at a time, and inspiring them to become the best versions of themselves. I am incredibly proud to be a part of this profession. And I promise to continue serving my very best to the students I serve. Thank you again for this tremendous honor. I'm truly grateful.
Do you want to introduce your family?
Yeah, of course. So this is my husband, Phil, the one that I was talking about. This is our oldest son, Jonathan, and his girlfriend, Yasenia. And this is Ryan, which most of you know more than you know me. And my brother-in-law, Tony.
Congratulations, Mrs. Avalos. We do have one more employee that we're recognizing tonight. So a couple of years ago, we decided to create a category to recognize employees who may not fall into the Teacher of the Year category or into our other classified Employee of the Year categories. And these are individuals who make a difference every day in the life of kids and deserve to be recognized. And our recipient this year is absolutely at the top of that list. So I'd like to welcome up Ms. Jerilyn Kuhar. As you all know, Jerilyn is our school psychologist at Oak Middle School, where she is deeply beloved. Look at the Oak crowd. And Jerilyn makes an impact absolutely every day in the lives of the kids and the families that she serves. And has continued to make an impact on our district as a whole, taking on new leadership opportunities, continuing to find ways for her own personal and professional growth. And we're so thrilled to celebrate you. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pulver.
How you feeling, Jerilyn? I'm sure when she saw that speech of yours, she is like getting so nervous about ready to pass out. Jerilyn is just an exceptional human being, above and beyond anything else. And you know, earlier when we were talking about Lori and Mrs. Davidson was saying, you know, early on, it's kind of rare to be able to see greatness in somebody and that you know somebody even before they embark upon their career that they're going to be great. And I can say that that is true, that Jerilyn actually defies that truth. I had the great fortune, I was assistant principal at McAuliffe at the time, who worked under an exceptional school psychologist, Dr. Linda Brown. And Jerilyn was one of her interns. And you know, we have so many great interns from time to time. And I can tell you that as an assistant principal, young at that time, I could see the greatness in Jerilyn. She was at the top of our list throughout the district of who we wanted to hire in that applicant pool. And she just continues to be that employee where greatness is just everything that she's about. She goes above and beyond. She's really only, other than, I think, your internship, has only worked at Oak Middle School throughout these 23 years. There are probably some other shared assignments, but that Oak has been her home for the bulk of that. Jerilyn is just someone who uplifts everyone. She extends her arms. And we talk about running to kids as well who need us the most. That certainly is a theme tonight. And it certainly, Jerilyn represents that. She takes every single student, whether they're on her caseload or not, underneath her wings. And she makes them feel important. She is their biggest cheerleader. When we talk about being a champion for kids as well, Jerilyn epitomizes that. She's someone who goes, no task is too small or too large for her to really just be willing to pitch in, to help. She hates attention, so she always wants to be behind the scenes. But the work that she does really makes a difference. She takes such personalized care, whether it be about a particular student's schedule or the type of accommodations that they may need, or how to help nurture situations and support a family in their time of need and really help a student as well. She's one of the best psychologists that I've been able to work with as well. And I've been able to be fortunate to work with so many. But that greatness continues after 23 years. And she's just going to, every single day, she gets better and better in providing just love and nurturance and support to students. As Ryan was sharing, she's branched out into other roles as well. She's really stepped out of her comfort zone and was our summer school, middle school, summer school administrator. And she's been part of our aspiring leaders cohort. That's a two-year cohort. And if you, you know, sometimes we think, do you have any personal time? I think she's almost made this family her other family as well, which I think everyone does in Los Al. does in Los Alamos. She's going to be our secondary administrator as well for summer school, partnering with some great colleagues this summer as well. Jerilyn, you just are superb in each and every single thing that you do. Your eyes light up for kids and they light up for staff. Staff know that you are someone who has them, that you can lean, they can lean on you, that you're always there for them. And so I just want to thank you for being an incredible school psychologist, an incredible advocate for parents, and a world-renowned colleague, and just an exceptional human being. Congratulations on this esteemed honor. Evelyn, you're up.
Madam President, esteemed members of the board, executive cabinet, and our wonderful Los Alamos community, I cannot say enough about Ms. Jerilyn Kuhar. When you think of a wonderful human being, you think of integrity, honesty, diligence, and just a genuine heart for all human beings. And that is who you are, Jerilyn. You go above and beyond and are more than happy to stay in the background. And today, we bring you up to the surface, and it is with such joy, because everyone, whether we were able to make it here today or for whatever reason couldn't make it, came in and expressed so much joy that Jerilyn was going to be recognized today. She runs to all kids, that's a definite, but she runs to all of us as well. Every morning, Jerilyn has the magic of brightening up our office. People don't know this, but she's hilarious. So she makes us laugh all day. You get us through the hard times. You truly are just such a bright light in all of our lives. What she does for children is magnificent. I speak as a parent and as an educator who loves students. Our most delicate children run to her. So she not only runs to kids, she's created a safe environment where students feel comfortable and confident to run to her, and that is truly a gift. It's a gift to have an adult that students are able to be vulnerable with, and you provide that gift for so many students. From feeding them, to being their biggest cheerleader, to taking pictures of them even when middle schools don't want, middle schoolers sometimes don't want their picture taken. She runs our Instagram, and kids really do allow it because Ms. Kuhar is the one who's asking. So Jerilyn, you are Oak, you are Los Alamos. You make everything you touch better in the quietest way. And today, I am just so honored to be able to rise you up and give you your moment. So Jerilyn has that smile. She has that ability to, when I've gone to visit Oak, I step in and you're always there to greet us with a smile. I mean, like, this is the only time that I haven't seen you, like, glowing smiling. And I think it's circumstances. To be a psychologist in a school or a psychologist in the world takes an ability to absorb and understand depth of knowledge that goes beyond a lot of what any of us are exposed to. But to take that knowledge, you can be a technician, you can be a scientist, you can be a doctor, but Jerilyn takes it further. She uses that knowledge as her tool to reach the hearts and minds of students who really need her. And that is such a tremendous gift. And it has to, there has to be a weight with that, a heaviness that, with stories that you hear and things that you deal with, but you never show that. You have this ability to spread joy wherever you are, and yet, I know when you're working with the kids and with parents, you must be a source of incredible strength and wisdom and hope in building plans that will help them. We are so incredibly grateful for you. And when I heard that you got this award, I thought, yes! And I went, oh, she's not going to like that. So it's like, oh, good, she gets to be in the limelight. But that's because she's, she liked Lori. They're very selfless people who are always looking to lift up everyone else. So it is a great honor, on behalf of the board, to say that this award is yours. This award is so well-deserved by you, and you get to celebrate it, and really honestly, in the quiet of the night, you'll be smiling.
Good evening, President Davidson, Board members, Dr. Pulver, and members of the Los Alamos community. After having some time to reflect on receiving the Employee of the Year Award, I find myself even more honored and truly humbled by the recognition. To be acknowledged among such dedicated, talented, and passionate professionals, many of whom I've learned from and continue to admire, is something that I don't take lightly. I am genuinely surrounded by experts in this district, and it's a privilege just to be among them. Thank you to all of my teams, my school psych team, my psych team, and the entire special education department here is second to none. I love what I do, I love kids, I love the moments when curiosity sparks, confidence grows, and connections are made. Being part of Los Alamos is more than a job for me, it's a calling. Every day that I step onto campus, I feel the weight and the joy of that calling. I know how deeply blessed I am to do this work with such an incredible community of educators, students, and families. Thank you for creating a district where passion is valued, growth is nurtured, and every child is seen. And thank you for this honor, it means more than words can express.
So because of these wonderful women and their supporting staff, family, friends, we are going to take a recess so the pictures can be taken. So a short recess for pictures. So don't anybody go anywhere.
Talk to you, Mrs. David.
We're gaveling back in after a brief recess. It is now time for public comments, and we do have one person. The board welcomes input from the public. This is the opportunity for community members to provide public comment to the board on agenda items or items not listed on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board should complete a speaker request card prior to the start of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of three minutes. Public comment is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Comment cards can be submitted to the district office any time after 9:00 a.m. the day of the board meeting and will be also accepted at the start of the board meeting at 6:00 p.m. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another. When addressing the board, speakers are requested to address the board from the podium, state their name, and adhere to time limits. The board may not take any action or discuss any items not appearing on the posted agenda and cannot immediately respond to public comments. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because those comments are made at a public meeting. And I did that without glasses. So we'd like to call Gianna Payne to the podium, please. And Gianna, if I mispronounced it, you need to let me know.
Hello, board members, Dr. Pulver, and amazing Los Alamos staff and parents. My name is Gianna Payne, and I'm a freshman at Los Alamos High School. And I'm involved in the marching arts program, which consists of marching band, drum line, and winter guard. This means I'm enrolled in the sixth-period color guard class. During that period, I get ready for rehearsal, do conditioning, do the basics of color guard on flag and dance, and then practice for our field and indoor show depending on the semester. My friends in the percussion class practice their concert band music before doing sectionals or having practice. And during seventh-period marching band class, we practice. We have assignments such as dot book checks, practice logs, video assignments, and a performance-based final. And we are also enrolled in ninth-period performing arts P.E., where we do fitness logs and quizzes on readings. I love color guard, however, I don't love not receiving any college eighth-AG credits for any of those classes. I think that this is messed up as we don't get credits as similar programs do, such as dance and concert band both get high school graduation credits and USC/CSU credits for visual arts and performing arts and college preparatory elective credits. We should not have to take an extra performing arts P.E. class as well because we practice and perform for a total of more than 650 hours per semester. This is more than 27 days straight with two class periods, competitions, pep band, parades, and outside-of-school practice on weekdays and weekends. From my information and research, this is more than any other program on campus. This is a large commitment to not receive any A- through G college entry credits or graduation credits. I'm currently taking nine classes on campus and a dual enrollment class. But in my senior year, colleges are not going to see that I'm taking three band-related classes with a full zero through seventh and eighth period. Usually, it's a one-through-six schedule. This means I have to get to school at 7:30 and stay until 4:19, or when I have practice around 7:30. Usually, I stay at school from anywhere from nine to 12 hours per day, five days a week. But colleges won't see that because I don't have A- through G credits. This cuts into my studying time, but colleges will just see me as an average student with a normal honors ninth-grade workload and schedule. These classes are in the UC Doors Gateway Portal to receive college credits for visual performing arts for other local high schools such as El Segundo and Artesia. So why don't we receive these credits? This is not a precedent that needs to be set. It is a recognition of the hard work and dedication that marching band students have for our program. This will also help clarify with the counselors to help with our recruitment and retention as when I was at McCalliv Middle School today to help with recruiting, one eighth-grader told me that their counselor said they can't take color guard or marching band because they won't get P.E. credits. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Thank you very much. We now move on.
Mrs. Davidson, if you don't mind, can I just have Colin, our deputy superintendent, Mrs. Reed, to try to shed a little information to illuminate for me at least and perhaps the board? I know the board can't come on it, but staff can try to take a look and better understand.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Pulver. And thank you so much, Ms. Payne, for sharing. There's nothing better than hearing from student voices about impacts your schedule. And we're very aware of the hours and commitment and the dedication that both color guard, percussion, and the entire marching band put into really just making it a phenomenal representation of what it is to be a Griffin on our campus. The dedication really is unparalleled. Actually, Mr. Platt and I, Dr. Platt and I, recently met because El Segundo and Artesia were the first to award A- through G credit, and he started advocating for the change already this school year. And it's something that we're currently reviewing in A- through G UC Doorways. Doorways is fickle. That's a good word that I'll use. And they have very specific strategic areas in which you can award credit. So we are looking at everything that we can do to do that. I do want to share that freshmen coming in and sophomores do receive P.E. credit for being in both the marching band and color guard. It isn't an additional class, but it's a once-a-month check-in with a P.E. teacher. And that would be because our marching band and color guard credentials don't, those teachers don't have a physical education credential, so technically, they can't issue physical education credit. So what we've created in partnership with the high school to really help support students coming in that have these passions is a hybrid P.E. program. And so the students turn in a log once a month to a P.E. teacher on late start Mondays. So they come 10 times throughout the school year for a half hour in a conference consult with the P.E. teacher who reviews their logs and then issues the P.E. credit so that P.E. credit does show up for both freshman and sophomore year as the graduation credits that Ms. Payne was speaking to. It is very sad. Many of our electives like dance, song, cheer, until recently yearbook and ASP, until we made some changes a few years ago, also didn't have A- through G credit. And so it's been something that's been evolving and changing in Doorways, and the high school staff has been on it since the beginning of the second semester, when Artesia and El Segundo did get their first approval to offer the credits. And so we're hoping to be there by the end of the school year as well.
Thank you very much. That was great information. Thank you. Now we're moving on to information and presentations. Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Madam President. It does give me great pleasure to introduce and call to the podium our current Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee Chair, Ms. Porvi Trevetti, who will be presenting the 2324 Annual Report. And I'd also like to thank her for her commitment in serving in the Citizens' Bond Oversight as well as all of our current members that it serves. So thank you and good evening.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Pulver, and Executive Cabinet. My name's Porvi Trevetti. I'm the chairperson of the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee, known as the CBOC for short. The Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee was established as a result of Measure G, a local bond measure that was approved by our voters in the 2018 election. The bond measure necessitated the form of the CBC Committee, so the district put out a call to the community for volunteers. Currently, we have seven members, and each member applied, sat for an interview, was appointed to the committee by the Los Alamos Unified School District Board of Education. Our current members are Donna Artukovich, Christina Canning, Christine Coxhill, Sulima Holgam, Eric Johnson, Allison Mohana, and myself. I also want to recognize the service of Cherny Jimenez, Lauren Navarro, Marilyn Poe, and Chad Stewart, who were members of the CBOC for many years, and their terms recently expired. The duties of the CBOC are threefold: to inform the public concerning the district's expenditures of bonds proceeds generated under Measure K and Measure G; to review the expenditure reports produced by the district; ensure bond proceeds are expended only for the purpose set forth in the measure and not for teacher or administrative salaries or other operating expenses; and finally, to present to the Board of Education an annual written report which you received, which includes a statement indicating whether the district is following the requirements of certain sections, the California Constitution, and the summary of the CBOC's proceedings and activities for the preceding year. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of our entire committee to present the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee Annual Report for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Leading up to tonight, we held numerous meetings. Our most recent meeting was on March 19th, 2025. At our committee meeting on January 22nd, 2025, the CBOC was presented with the annual audit by Ellen Sau, E.D. Bailey, an independent auditing firm. Mr. Sau presented the financial statement and the performance audits for both Measure K and Measure C to our committee. In the audit, it states both financial statement audits had no adjustments, and the firm issued an unmodified opinion on both Measure K and Measure G. There were no findings with respect to the financial statements. Mr. Sau answered the questions posed to him by the members of our committee with full and complete answers. Measure G and Measure K 2024 financial audits will be available online at the school district website under losal.org, under the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee tab. The website also contains other information of the activities of the CBOC. At the CBOC's request, the district has kept up-to-date all relevant information. In conclusion, our committee finds that the Los Alamos Unified School District is in compliance with the requirements in Article 13A, Section 1B3 of the California Constitution. Now having presented the annual report for fiscal year 2023, 2024 of the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee to the Los Alamos Board of Education, CBOC would like to thank Dr. Andrew Pulver, Alvia Scher, CJ Nolan, Shoshana Dornblasser for their assistance throughout our fourth term, and also welcome Timothy Golden. We have been provided with rapid response to all our requests for information and clarification. It has been such a great pleasure working with all of you to achieve our stated mission. The committee also would like to extend our gratitude to all of you, the members of the Board of Education, for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Porvi. Please thank your committee, too. That was wonderful. Thank you.
I have one quick question. One quick question. Thank you, Alvia. I chaired that a very long time ago, it seems, for the first Measure K that we had. And I was just curious, as we're coming to the end of some of our projects, and I know that we have all of our bond dollars, how long will the committee continue on?
So I anticipate that we are going to finalize expending all of the Measure G funds by the end of June 30th of 2025. After that, of course, some expenditures still linger with the gymnasium as one of the major projects that we're using Measure G funds right now. Once that's completed, like I said, expenditures are going to linger into the 2526 fiscal year. We may have one more meeting and then another audit. Once all the funds are completed and expended, a final audit needs to be done. So I'm anticipating early January of 2026 would be our final meeting with the CBOC.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Porvi, for all your work.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. And so now we're moving on to Dr. Wieswright and the LAEA proposal. LAEA?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We are so fortunate in our district, as you know, to have great partnerships and relationships with LAEA and our other bargaining unions. And tonight, I'm going to welcome up to the podium to Sunshine for the 2526 school year Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Lori Avalos.
I promise I'm not reading the same speech. The Los Alamos Education Association, LAEA, initial proposal for the 2025-2026 to Los Alamos Unified School District. The Los Alamos Education Association proposes to open negotiations for the 2025-26 school year in Article 5, Hours and Employment and Duties, as well as Salary and Benefits. LAEA reserves the right to discuss all articles of the collective bargaining agreement between the Los Alamos Unified School District and the Los Alamos Education Association for the purposes of discussion and modification.
Thank you. And do we move on to the next one, then? Dr. Wieswright?
So thank you, Mrs. Avalos. In turn, the Los Alamos Unified School District proposes to open negotiations for the 2025-2026 with the Los Alamos Education Association, LAEA, also on Article 5, Hours of Employment and Duties, as well as Salary and Benefits. Los Alamos Unified School District reserves the right to discuss all articles of the collective bargaining agreement between the LAEA and Los Alamos Unified School District for the purposes of discussion and modification.
Thank you. So we're going to go into a public hearing. So I will, on the proposal, I will gavel out and gavel into the hearing. Is there any discussion? No discussion. We will gavel out then and gavel back into the meeting. Now we are going to look at instructional materials, the process review. Mrs. Reed?
Perfect. Thank you so much, President Davidson. So tonight, I'll be taking an opportunity just to walk the board through the instructional materials adoption process, which includes a public preview. And so when we're talking about instructional materials, we're really talking about two different groups of materials, and they're evaluated and reviewed in different processes. And so we'll be looking first at core instructional materials, and then I will also be sharing with you the process when we're evaluating supplemental instructional materials. And so core instructional materials really are the primary resources that teachers use in the classroom to teach and lay the foundational learning content for their area. They're designed to align with state standards and really form the foundation for daily instruction across all classrooms and student groups. These materials are adopted through a formal district-wide review process and are intended to be used by the majority of students for the majority of instructional time. So a great example is currently our middle school English Language Arts Department have been piloting, or on the third pilot, actually, of core instructional materials as they're looking at new textbook adoption. So state textbook adoptions are an example of a core instructional material. Some of our comprehensive digital learning platforms. So we recently adopted CK-12 for our biology courses at the high school. That's basically a digital textbook, and so it would also be considered core curricular material, as well as any teacher and student additions of curriculum that come with a large adoption. And so supplemental material would be something that we're using to support those core materials. And so supplemental instructional materials really are the additional resources used to support, reinforce, extend the core materials. They may be used to provide intervention, enrichment, or address specific learning needs, but they do not replace the core curriculum. These materials are adopted through a teacher-administrator review process, different than a district-wide formal evaluation process. Some great examples of those would be novels used by grade-level teams or department teams at our middle school and high school, short stories, videos that teachers show in the classbook, a workbook, like wordly wise in the elementary school. It's a grammar and vocabulary support, but it's a supplement to our Hooten, Miffen, and Harcourt Into Reading program. Digital tools for practice remediation like ST Math or GG that support our HMH adoption of math. And then some other materials for English learners, students with disabilities, that also address and reinforce concepts in a different way for different student groups that still are supporting the core instructional material adoption. And so if we look at the pathway to core material adoption, it usually starts because there's a change. There's a change in the California framework, a change in the content standards. There could be a change for us, like a course redesign, or sometimes a change in that we have an outdated textbook. So tonight, actually, I'm bringing forward a book for our finite math because it's no longer in print. It's outdated. So a change was needed. And then we form here in Education Services an adoption committee. That adoption committee is a comprehensive group of teachers that represent all of the school sites or levels in which the curriculum would be used, as well as administrators. Sometimes specialists, like a teacher on special assignment who has an area of expertise in that content area, would also join the adoption committee. We then invite publishers in, and they do formal presentations to really outline for teachers and staff the different resources, how their program is structured. And then teachers and people on the curriculum committee give ed services a recommendation about which publishers they'd like to pilot. Traditionally, we pilot about two, but when we have teachers that just don't feel like they have the right fit, like in middle school English Language Arts, sometimes they'll go back out, and we'll do a third pilot. So after the classroom pilots, the adoption committee reconvenes, we debrief, and we start to really look at multiple components that I'll highlight in a minute of the evaluation process of core materials. Once we've selected a core material, then I will come to the board and bring a recommendation to the board to publicly preview that core curriculum to the community. It will send on public preview, and then eventually, the board would take action to either adopt that as a core curriculum or to not adopt that recommendation as a core curriculum. So as we kind of narrow into what that evaluation process looks like for core materials, there's really multiple areas that the state provides guidance under ed code that we look at. First is standards alignment. So core curricular materials, because they need to be used the majority of the time by the majority of students, need to be aligned to the California content standards in the class content area of which we're using them. We also need to make sure that core curricular materials ensure full coverage of grade-level standards and learning progressions. They could be used to meet the mandates of that course without additional supplemental materials. We look at instructional quality. That's why teachers pilot these. We want to make sure that the research-based instructional strategies are embedded into the curriculum. There's clear learning objectives, and we see a progression of skills through the curriculum, that there's support for critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and creativity. We look at their universal access and equity. Can this core material be used to support a varied group of students? English language learners, students with disabilities, students that are performing below their grade level, and students who need extension and are performing above the grade level? Are the books reflective of diverse cultures, perspectives, and identities? And are there accessibility features that we know that we'll need for students that might be on an individualized education plan or a 504 accommodation, such as text-to-speech or translation tools embedded? We also have to look to make sure that core instructional materials meet the Fair Education Act that came into place January 1st, 2012. It's a law that states that the material inside, anything adopted inside LEAs must be accurate and inclusive, portrayals of diverse races, genders, religions, sexual orientations, and people with disabilities, that the curricular material is avoidance of bias, stereotypes, or exclusion of underrepresented groups, and ensures topics are addressed in age-appropriate and educationally relevant manner. We look at assessment resources. That's a key component for teachers, right? That this adoption would include formative, summative, and diagnostics assessments within that content area, and that those assessment results really help support data-driven decision-making and progress monitoring of students. And then last, teachers give us feedback on teacher support and usability. Is, are the teacher guides clear? Do they provide a pacing guide? Do they have opportunities for scaffolding? Are there differentiation strategies embedded in the sides of the TE edition, the professional development training components that would come along with an adoption? And then really, the ease of implementation. What does this look like in a real classroom setting in terms of ongoing updates, access? Sometimes in a publisher presentation, everything looks great, and then teachers get in the classroom, and the materials are clunky, or the digital tools don't really work in great integration the way that, you know, the salespeople that came out showed us. And so we spend a lot of time with the adoption committee during the debrief, really looking at the variances in the materials that we've piloted before the curricular adoption committee makes that recommendation that I bring here to the Board of Education. So that's kind of a snapshot of when we're looking at a core material. Oh, I forgot about my last slide. I've talked about quite a bit of this. However, things that we also rate on the scale are student engagement, and I think that's something that's actually... that's something that's actually been a little bit more difficult to rate with our recent experience with middle school English Language Arts, because there's so many multimedia components to adoptions now that look varied. And so, is the content age-appropriate? Is it engaging? The digital compatibility? Does it easily work in our Chromebooks and our iPads? Does it automatically export to Google Classroom and import grades into Aries? So, there's a lot of technical features that teachers are looking for. And then, ultimately, we're also looking, right, at that cost and sustainability. Is this a one-time cost for seven years? Is it an annual digital license that we're going to owe on top of what the textbooks cost? So, all those components come forward as part of our core materials when we look at making that recommendation to the Board of Education. Looking at supplemental materials, it's a much smaller process, because what we're looking to do is support core materials for different groups of teachers and different groups of learners across the school district. And so, typically, this comes from a need. A teacher or a group of teachers wants something that supports, reinforces, extends, or maybe adds engagement, or an area of interest, if we're talking about a novel, like the elementary, middle, or high school level. So, we're showing a varied perspective of different types of authors, genres inside of our classrooms, that maybe the core curriculum wasn't great at highlighting. And so, a teacher or an administrator can make a recommendation, I'll just use a novel as an example, can make a recommendation to bring a novel forward to be used. That novel can be brought forward for fifth grade, it could be brought forward for sixth grade or above, for a high school English class, it could be brought forward for all of elementary. It's very specific when the novel's brought forward, where it would be used, and how it would be used instructionally. So, the evaluation process is then done at the site level. It's not a district-wide, because if we're bringing forward a novel, I'll just say for a fifth-grade team at an elementary school that really wants to support the curriculum, it's not necessary that all fifth-grade teams in the district will use that exact novel. It's a team that's bringing forward an interest that they may have to supplement the curriculum. And so, the evaluation process, which will kind of zoom in on the next slide, happens at the site level before it comes to the district for a material review. Once the evaluation process has ended at the site level, then that comes to my office, and I bring it forward on an agenda, once again, for a public preview, as well as for the board to be able to weigh in, once its community preview time has expired, and take action to either support that recommendation of a supplemental material, or to not add that novel, for example, as a supplemental material. And so, what that evaluation process looks like when we start at the site material review is teacher looks for instructional relevance. How would they use this novel to support or align with curriculum standards and learning objectives in a content area? What's the educational value of bringing a novel forward? You know, what skills, concepts, or themes does a book reinforce that a teacher's really trying to integrate as they're looking to build knowledge for students? The literary content and use. So, they look at the summary of the plot, the major themes, central messages that could be in a novel. The genre and grade-level appropriateness are being evaluated at the site level. The lexile level, so the text complexity, does it match the purpose of use? The length of it, which courses that it might be appropriate for when we're looking at assigning a supplemental material. Do other schools or districts use that novel is something that we'll look at. It also has to adhere to the Fair Act compliance. We look at sensitive content. So, when the recommendation comes to the district office, the teacher and administrator are sharing with us, is there language, violence, sexual content, drug or alcohol use included in the book? Evaluators rate each of these categories as done, mild, moderate, or strong, and give us specific references to look at. They provide information of cultural-political sensitivities that may be included in the novel, identifying anything that's controversial, polarizing, or maybe a community-sensitive theme, looking at any flag of religious content or critique. They're also sharing parental considerations that the novel or a supplemental resource could bring up. So, notes of any past bans or challenges in other districts or states. And traditionally, also provide an alternate book option that could be used for a student or a parent who would request an alternative to a supplemental resource. The site will traditionally also do a peer review and comparison. So, another fifth-grade teacher on that team looking at the book, even if they're not reading it, talking about its use and its summary, what it would look like to use in the department, comparing it with similar novels or materials they currently use, or maybe have previously used in the past, and why this supplement might be better for a particular usage that they're looking to fill in a unit. Then, the teacher and the site administrator sign a verification. It's really affirming that the book has been read and reviewed, and we do require the primary person who's bringing forward the supplemental materials, we'll just say a teacher in this case, has read the book themselves and is submitting that book, having been read using their professional lens. At the middle school and high school level, there'll also be an opportunity for the department chair to share. That doesn't mean that they've read the book. It's very clear, have they read or just reviewed the material? So, a department chair administrator could also provide additional information regarding the novel as well. And then, lastly, once the site evaluation of the material is done, it comes to my office, and we review information for accuracy from the site level. The signature from Education Services is really affirming that the book recommendation process has been reviewed, and that the Board of Education has all pertinent information regarding the novel to make a decision. So, the district or Education Services job isn't to say yes or no to a book, but to assist the site, teachers and administrators, in making sure that the board has all relevant information that they need to weigh in and make a decision on whether or not to push forward a core material, or push forward a supplemental material for review. I'd love to take any questions.
So, thank you so much. That was a wonderful and very informative presentation. I appreciate it. Can you help me understand, Mrs. Reed? So, in that process, if there is some concerns around a book, and of the people that go through the process and the nine evaluation steps that you've outlined, if somebody or, you know, several individuals say no, or say that they have some concerns, can you help us understand what additional review or conversation then happens in that particular situation?
So, it's noted, those who don't support or have no, and they have an opportunity to explain the why. The book is still brought forward for the board to preview, to look at, to make a judgment. No one teacher makes a yes, no one teacher makes a no on whether or not a material would be used in a classroom. Ultimately, the Board of Education has the control to say yes or no to all materials that are available in a classroom. So, that would be noted in the process, so that that information would be available?
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Reed, also, you know, I know there have been questions occasionally when it comes to our elementary schools, and our elementary school teachers spend a lot of time and a lot of their own money creating libraries for their students to be able to get readers. Are those books through these processes, or those are books that they've chosen to put into their libraries?
So, those books do not come through this process. So, classroom libraries, teachers are allowed to use their professional judgment in placing books inside their classroom that are aligned with the lexile level, developmentally appropriate, and they believe benefit all students, because those books aren't supplementing the core curriculum. Really, something becomes a core curriculum when a teacher uses that item whole class ongoingly to supplement the core curriculum. So, even, I'm going to give an example of a high school class. If I was a U.S. history teacher, and something relevant happened in recent news, I, as a teacher, am allowed to use professional judgment to bring in a newspaper article, a current event, to bring up that discussion with my class. If I find relevance, and I would like to use this ongoingly now as something that I do believe supports my core curriculum, that would be something, then, that would be brought forward if we're going to ongoingly use it as a supplemental material. But teachers are allowed to use their professional lens to bring lessons and resources into the classroom, but once it becomes something that the majority of students are seeing, then we do ask, and it's under Ed Code, that teachers should bring those forward. A classroom library, just like the books that are in the libraries that kids could check out at the elementary school, those aren't supplements to our curriculum. So, those are all purchased by either a media specialist with an administrator's signature as being appropriate for an elementary setting, and/or a classroom teacher in their personal library, but those aren't brought forward for board approval.
So, I just have, it's kind of a simple question, but so, over the years, from the AP Environmental Science, that stirred up a little controversy, or Family Life, whatever, I forgot what it's called, Healthy...
California Healthy Youth Act.
Yes, okay. Thank you. To our Ethnic Studies, this process you've used, I experienced through Ethnic Studies. You did it, it was incredible, the amount of time, weeks, months, that went into creating that curriculum for a new class, and all along the way, as you were building the program, you did workshops showing how it came about, what resources we were using, the people that were involved in your committees. And in every preview, including tonight, we have a novel. The opportunity is offered not only to us to preview it, but to the community, and throughout, especially Ethnic Studies, I got contact from community members wanting to know about the curriculum, and I always referred them to that opportunity. How often do you get from the community, people coming and previewing during that 30-day period?
I've been in my role 10 years, and I've had maybe four or five people come, and it all happened to be during Ethnic Studies.
Okay. Thank you. But the opportunity is there.
Yeah. We have a lot of people that have come forward under California Healthy Youth Act. We just never had anyone actually come to the district office and want to view the curriculum. I should share, though, when it comes to California Healthy Youth Act, we do share with our families every year before we start curriculum, that they have an opportunity to review it. The majority of that is online now to make it easy for families. So, that is an annual public opportunity that parents have when it comes to the California Healthy Youth Act.
One more quick question. And we do, because for me, a lot of times, from my lens, it is age-appropriate. So, is there, especially with supplemental materials, is there a component of that evaluation that looks at whether it is age-appropriate?
There is, and I think if you look at genre and grade-level appropriateness under number two, I think that's also something that every individual may have a different lens about. And so, I think our classroom teachers do a great job at using the lens they have with the students developmentally in front of them, but we all have different backgrounds and beliefs and value systems. I think that slightly change what each of us, even in this room, may think is age-appropriate. And I think that's where it's really important that we value teachers' recommendations. It's not one person's yes or no, but that it comes through a process where the board weighs in, and that it's very clear to the community, and that opportunity for community to access and see what will be inside of a classroom, so that it doesn't become one teacher or one team's decision, but really more of a public opportunity, because, I mean, we all work here to serve and support this community, and there are wishes. And so, I think ultimately, the board takes action to give us direction on what we should be bringing forward in classrooms and what we shouldn't. Like, I always see my role not as the gatekeeper of information, or the chooser of which books come forward, but really assuring the process has been followed, and that all the information is brought forward to the board in a timely manner, so that you can weigh in and make a decision on what you think is best inside of our schools.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Reed, I appreciate the whole presentation. I also really think what you just said about the age appropriateness, this number two, is also really just important for us to highlight. That's also a place where parents need to be having conversations with their students. For me, as a father, a book like my fifth grader is currently in her second Hunger Games book. That was a book that she didn't even feel was appropriate for her last summer, but over the course of this year and conversations that we had as a family, it was deemed that lexile level and reading level, it seemed appropriate, and themes are very mature, but it was a place where we had a family conversation about, are you ready to read this? Let's talk about what the topic's going to be. And so, I appreciate that. I also think that the conversations that teachers will be having with students about choosing the right book when they have their libraries is so important. I think the last thing I just really want to highlight is also, if parents are watching this, and parents have concerns with a book that's in the library, have a conversation with your child, and have a conversation with your teacher. I think that that's the first place. If there's a book that you do not feel it's something you want your child to read, it doesn't mean we need to be pulling it out of the library. It might mean you have to have a conversation with your student about choosing a different book, but it might be the right book for another student in the class and that family. So, I think knowing the process of, talk to your teacher if you don't feel like that's resolved, talk to your principal. If it's not resolved, we can work our way up through a ladder of having conversations, but have that conversation at a local level first.
I think that's why it's important, you know, as you see on part of these processes and part of the review, is having an alternative book. And I'll say that our teachers are very skilled, whether it be at elementary, middle, high. It's not uncommon that a parent will reach out, and that is the proper channel, if they're uncomfortable with the particular book that their child is reading, particularly if it's a book from their classroom library or whatnot, to let the teacher know. And our teachers are so quick to respond to find another alternative for them. But as you said, Mr. Bragman, you know, as a public school district, we serve diverse students and diverse families with very diverse opinions of what they think is appropriate for their child and not, and it's really not our job, per se, to be the ultimate decision. I always, I think you heard me say it earlier, parents are the primary educators, and so parents can be able to make certain choices and partner with their teacher through that process, and our teachers are more than willing to partner with parents through that as well. So, thank you.
Any other comment?
Just real quick, to sort of back up, to piggyback on what you just said, Dr. Pulver, in that that's why this presentation is so critical, because I think you highlight and you make it transparent what the evaluation process looks like, what levels it goes through, what we look for when we're evaluating a textbook, or a novel, or any kind of supplemental material. So, I really appreciate that, because I think our community really seeks transparency, and I know we have that available, and I know they don't always seek it out. So, it's just nice to, you know, once in a while, to refresh their memory that this is our evaluation process, this is what we go through, and, you know, what each person's role is in the process. And ultimately, we're not here to be gatekeepers, but we're here to make sure that the process was followed, and that we trust in the process, and we have the experts that have reviewed it, and we're open to our community's feedback. So, if the community feels compelled to review something, or to give us feedback on a particular material, then the door is always open, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. That was incredibly informative. Thank you. We're now moving on to presentation of a textbook. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you so much, President Davidson. Tonight, as I kind of mentioned earlier, we are bringing forward a finite mathematics book, Edition 12 by Cengage Learning. It will go on public preview beginning this evening. It is the current version of our board-approved book. It is just a newer edition. We can no longer purchase the older version, that is now out of print. And so, our team has met, and they still really like this book and want to continue using it. So, we're bringing forward the new edition to sit on public preview. They believe that it provides enhanced resources for students. They love the instructor companion for site lectures, and it has some great new digital tools that will offer our students in finite mathematics as well.
Thank you. You probably don't want me to preview that book. I need a tutor. Okay, so, now we have presentation of supplemental materials.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we're bringing forward the novel Joy Luck Club by Amy Tan, to be used in grade 10 or above, so an English 2 or higher course. The novel is being brought forward for approval as a valuable addition to the high school English curriculum. The novel provides students with opportunities to engage in literary analysis through its unique narrative structure, character development, and exploration of universal themes such as family, tradition, and personal identity. It aligns with state standards for literature and supports the development of critical reading and writing skills. This book also offers historical and cultural context that enhances students' understanding of the American experience through multiple perspectives.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, a quarterly report on Williams Uniform Complaints. Dr. Waiswright?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we are happy to share that there are no complaints on file for this quarter.
That's good news. Thank you. Mrs. Snurr, you're going to present on something we're very anxious to hear about, our Performing Arts Center.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I would like to call our Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations, who's going to provide the board with an update on where we are with the design of the renovations to our Performing Arts Center. This is kind of bittersweet, because this might be his last presentation as our Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations. So, thank you, CJ.
All right. Well, that's a hard way to start. Madam President, members of the board, good evening. I'm excited to present our first design... good evening. I'm excited to present our first design update for the Performing Arts Center renovation project. This is an update on the completion of our schematic design portion of the project, and I will get into some of those phases as we go on. So just to start off, to recap where we started with the Performing Arts Center, we have a current project budget of $12 million, and we are currently scheduled to submit our plans in the summer of 2025. This project, we identified several scope items through meeting, through user group meetings with, with the Performing Arts Center staff and user groups. And these items include new dimmable house lights, stage lighting, and upgraded power circuitry to the, to the overstage area, motorized stage lighting rigging over the audience, new and upgraded audiovisual equipment, room acoustics, and we are replacing the seating throughout the Performing Arts Center as well. And then most prominently, we would be adding restrooms to the Performing Arts Center. So as you know, the Performing Arts Center currently has very limited restrooms, so that is one of the main priorities of this project. So just to explore some of the existing conditions of our Performing Arts Center on the campus, right now, our, our Performing Arts Center has 579 total seats. We have a main seating area that has 379 seats and 200 seats in the rear areas on the right and left wings. For, for all of those seats, 579 seats, we only have eight total restroom fixtures. So that's four for women and four for men. I also wanted, sorry, I also wanted to go back and highlight kind of how the addition of the STEM building and the entry to our campus have really put a focal point on our Performing Arts Center. And it's really provided an opportunity where it exists currently to make it pretty much a shining star as you walk onto the campus. So I really wanted to highlight this point as we go further into some of the design aspects. So we're going to start off with some of the existing challenges. As we, as many of you know, the Performing Arts Center is an old concrete building that is very difficult to change structurally or add, add new spaces to. So beyond just that, those structural limitations, some of the issues that we've explored is the right and left wings have no visibility to the stage in the first three rows. So that's several seats that were included in the seating count, but they, their line of sight is pretty much obstructed to the main stage. In addition to that, I had previously mentioned that the restrooms are not ADA compliant, and they do not provide enough fixtures for a full audience. And then as we've met with DSA and some of our preliminary code analysis meetings, we've identified some other code requirements that were required to upgrade as well. One of those is the lobby entrance is sloped and does not meet the current ADA requirements for a level landing at an entry point. In addition to that, the audiovisual control booth is not ADA compliant, so we would have to provide access to those who might be in a wheelchair or have a, or have a disability to be able to access that area as well. Furthermore, we have unutilized space with partition walls between the main seating area and the rear seating area. So if you look on the drawing on the left-hand side, you can see those two pockets that are towards the center. Those are actually accordion walls that would come out and back. I, I don't, it hasn't been used since I've been here, and I would say it had to be used quite a while ago, but they used to be able, they used to close those, those walls and have lecture halls in those right and left wings. Now, it's not currently used like that anymore, so we want to take advantage of some of that space and see if we can repurpose it. So as we move on from these challenges, I'm going to present some of our design solutions for this space. So I've tried to color code some of these design solutions with the bullet points on the right-hand side, and they correspond on the left. So first and foremost, we were, we are planning to raise the rear seating area for visibility to the stage. So that would provide visibility for all three rows on both the right and left side. So that's the green area, also has the number two in front of it. Beyond that, we would be raising the floor level to match the back row of the main seating area. So we would be raising that floor area as you walk into the Performing Arts Center from the right or the left-hand side. This will allow for ADA access, and it also allows us to extend some of the seating further back. With that, we're able to relocate the audiovisual control booth. So right now, there's a walk path that can be walked from the right and left-hand wing behind the audiovisual control booth. So what we would be doing is pulling that back to the wall, where you would no longer have that double-door entrance there, but the sound booth would actually be located there. And the main entrances would be from the lobby. You would either go to the right wing of the Performing Arts Center or the left wing. With that, with the audiovisual booth sucked back to the wall, you're able to provide accessibility for students in wheelchairs or whoever needs to really access that space. So as you can see, as we're coming through some of these design solutions, we're trying to hit multiple items where it might be a code requirement upgrade, and it might be a priority for us as a site. So we're trying to essentially hit two birds with one stone. Furthermore, on, on that, we have the new restrooms. As you can see in the orange area on the bottom, on the right and left-hand side, we have about 13 toilets in the girls restroom, with eight toilets in the boys restroom and five urinals. So what we essentially did is we took that, we had an issue where we had to correct the level landing of the lobby. So we are recommending that we pull out the lobby, extend the front face of the Performing Arts Center, and provide two new restrooms on either side that would go in front of where the existing Performing Arts Center is now. This allows us to correct the floor leveling issue, and it also gives us a unique opportunity to create a new entrance and new exterior facade for the building as you walk up and approach.
Restrooms for the high school. This is a major hub right there, so having restrooms that would have access inside the PAC as well as exterior, just like we are doing with the gymnasium. This would give a lot more access to restrooms during lunchtime and passing periods, and quite honestly, might be able to allow us to close off other restrooms at lunchtime, since there's more restrooms there, to enhance our supervision of the restrooms during lunch, major use periods. There's some great benefits to, to this process.
So as we, as we move forward with, oh yeah, absolutely, sorry.
But, or would it change the lobby? Would it make the lobby larger as well? Because it, it's so small right now.
Essentially, we're going to be extending the lobby out. So it's, we're, we are not really, we're not able to change the structural components of the building because it is a concrete building, but we can add and extend out.
You see in yellow here, right, right next to the, the left and right restrooms?
Yes.
It looks like a pale yellow. That's all a new footprint. That would be the entrance into the lobby where, right past, you kind of see that, like, line where it becomes more white. That's the current lobby. So you see, that's an additional, you know, couple hundred square feet or more. Depending on pricing, we may need to make that a little bit smaller as we look at budget situations. But, but yes, that would give it a, a, a larger footprint. So it's coming into the current quad.
But it's still going to narrow in, but instead of narrowing in to straight ahead, it narrows in and then goes to the side where you go into. And the two restrooms that are already, well, there's three restrooms really that are already there, right?
Right. With, with ADA requirements, we're going to be, we have to make those into single occupancy restrooms. So those will be renovated into single occupancy restrooms. But just to, due to the size limitations and the structure of the building, we can't accommodate more fixtures in those restrooms.
That, that's fine.
So currently in the PAC, there's the, there's the two gendered restrooms, and then right at the very front, there are the two.
Single stalls.
Single, single sex, uh, single-use stalls. Where those single-use stalls, as you can see, those, that space now is becoming part of the footprint for the, the large gendered restrooms for, on the left and right flank of, of the entrance of the lobby.
That's very helpful.
Not, not to like steal your thunder, CJ, but I know, like, I didn't really understand the idea of how this looked either. But on the last page, that like made it make more sense to me. I know we're getting there, but if you look at the last page, you're sneaking peek at the last page.
Don't read the end of the book.
It makes more sense when you see the last page.
I don't want you to get too excited because it's over budget right now, so we have some ideas.
Over budget, but it makes more sense when you see the last page. Don't jump there.
So moving forward, as we get to some of those budget challenges, I wanted to go over, since we have some new board members, how a construction, how construction costs are totaled for a school construction project. Now, we usually split these costs into two categories, hard costs and soft costs. Hard costs are typically your actual construction, or the easy way I like to think about it is the things you can touch. When the project's done, that is your hard cost. The soft costs are your indirect expenses. So those can include like our architecture agreements, our inspections, DSA permitting, management, and all of those, uh, soft costs that aren't the actual construction essentially. Typically, on a, on a school construction project, soft costs range from 20% to 30%. On average, it's right about 25%. And at the end of a construction project, the hard costs accumulate about 75%. As we move forward, I want, I wanted to share that information with you as we get into some of the current estimate. So just to address the number on the, on the screen, this is our architect's schematic design estimate. So this is the first phase, but it currently has an estimate of $14,303,000. So this is approximately 2.3 million over what we have budgeted for the PAC. Right now, we are in the schematic design phase. If you look on the left-hand side, there's four phases traditionally in part of the design process. It starts with schematic design, design development, construction documents, and then agency or DSA approval. As we go through each of those phases, the estimates become more and more refined to what we're actually building. And during the schematic design, we're really working with a, a real rough estimate where there's large contingencies because we have a lot of unknown variables. As you could see on the right-hand side, we have a, a design contingency of approximately 364,000 and a contractor contingency of 928,000 and escalation contingency. Now, this was a, one that was just given to us by our architect over the last few days, where they have increased the escalation contingency due to the economic outlook for the, for, I guess, the global economy. With that, that is really what doubled over the last week or so. Just to be, just to, when we're budgeting, we always want to take the worst-case scenario. So what we're doing is these, in terms of hard costs and soft costs, contingencies are soft costs that eventually can become hard costs. So you want to account for those in your budget in a worst-case scenario. For example, with a contractor contingency, on projects like the new Aquatic Center or the STEM project, we used approximately 5%. And the number shown on your screen is a 10% of the construction costs. So we used about half of our contractor contingency on those projects. But then on other projects like the gymnasium where we encountered soils issues, we used the full 10%. So essentially, it doesn't mean that the money will be spent, but it's best to budget for those, for those type of scenarios.
The hard part is sometimes for us, as you guys know, and when you've gone through more of these phases, is some, traditionally, many times, the estimates we get from our architects are typically lower than the actual construction estimates that come in. And so you might recall with the gymnasium, when we got further along, not at this preliminary schematic design, we did ask a couple of our contractors who had partnered with us in the past to just look at the documents and give us their rough estimate as well, that we helped triangulate the data. So it's possible it could be up, but at the same time, because they really dramatically increased that escalation contingency, they more than doubled it. Last week, it was 600-something thousand, and it's now doubled that. Who knows? It, it might be close. So I, I don't want to kill a dream yet, because I think we will have some more options to, to explore.
I will say, from a, from, from our standpoint, this is probably a more conservative estimate by our architecture team, just especially with the escalation contingency. It could, it could very well be less than that, but that is what they're currently forecasting, and it is their, it is their schematic design estimate. So I wanted to present that to the board. As, as Andrew mentioned, in some of the other projects like the gymnasium, as we go through the phases in design development and construction documents, we will begin to reach out to some of those contractors, and we'll be getting a third-party, third-party estimating team to review, review those documents. Right now, in the schematic design, we just don't have enough details to really get an accurate estimate. So really, with that being said, I wanted to go over some of the factors that can affect our future estimates and, and our project budget allocation. So in terms of cost-reduction strategies, really, we're looking at a couple of things, design simplification, sorry, which would be the reducing the complexity in the architecture and the finishes, using more standard finishes and fewer angles, like Andrew mentioned, possibly reducing that lobby back towards to be in alignment with the restrooms, and other items like that. So as we're going through the design process, what we typically do is we create a value engineering list of things that we can reduce, depending on how the design or the estimate looks like in the future. Other things that we can, we can do is phase construct, construction. We could explore phase delivery options and avoid peak-market pricing periods. Now, this might be something like where we build the restrooms and the exterior lobby portion, and then tackle the interior portion at separate times so that the contractor has complete access for each portions of those projects. As Andrew mentioned earlier, early contractor involvement. So soliciting input from contractors during design, it not only helps us get accurate estimates, but it helps us identify those really costly scope items. Sometimes there might be things that are drawn on paper that aren't as obvious to us as design, as our, not as obvious to our designer that they will, they're significant cost items. Value engineering, I somewhat already went over, so we would want to really prioritize and focus on the essential program elements and defer non-critical items as alternates. So if you recall with the gymnasium, we did that with the weight room, and we were still able to incorporate that into the project. And then last, we have the project delivery method. So traditional hard bid versus lease-leaseback. So those are two different delivery methods where, on a project of this size, it may be more advantageous to go for a hard bid than a lease-leaseback, where you typically would spend a little bit more money. Furthermore, we have the budget allocation strategy, so we do have some state-matching funds that we are currently in line to receive from previously completed projects. And then we also have facility funds that we could utilize.
I was going to pause you there just to unpack each of these, because Elvia and her team have done a phenomenal job in trying to maximize any type of state-matching dollars that we can receive. So as you know, we've earmarked $12 million that we have allocated and budgeted and real dollars for, for this project. But we expect, we got a 90-day notice just last week from the California Department of Ed or Defense of Star, right? Oh, say that again. OPSE, and switches the state-matching funds. And we think we could have up to between two different projects, 1.5 million. So that could help, that now gets us to almost 13.5 million if we choose to put all of that towards this, to the PAC. So we're getting closer to, to those options. And then, as he's going to talk about the next one, we'll unpack in a second.
And.
And we hope there could be more matching funds, too. We're still in the pipeline for...
For Weaver's Playground and Battery Backup. It's about maybe 600 to 700,000 dollars.
So it's possible to get more.
And we haven't completed any paperwork just yet, or an application for the gymnasium could potentially have some, maybe.
Possibly, because it's a PE, and the weight room is also a PE classroom, but at some point, the, the dollars amount allocated to the site might be exhausted. But we're going to explore every avenue.
So you built in that escalation contingency?
Correct.
And you feel that that was conservative, that was a good thing. But do you anticipate, and I know we're in such a volatile situation, but with materials coming from overseas, do... is there a point where we can lock it in, like lock-in materials? I guess we have to have a building plan first.
And yeah, it has to be approved by DSA.
Yeah, it becomes really difficult to do that at, at the stage of design that we're currently in. I would say the biggest item was probably just steel and there's a lot of construction materials that usually come from outside of the country. With, with that being said, we could also utilize unallocated facilities funds if and when available. And then I also alluded to this.
Just want to unpack that piece a little more for you too, because you know, so developer fees. And, and you know, each, I think every two years, we take a look, we have a developer fee report. And so we can't allocate those dollars until they're received. But if we get more, she, Elvia projects a budget, but if more developer fees come in, and she's usually more conservative on that end, which is the right approach, under values what the developer fees would come in so that we always get, hopefully, we get more than what we're budgeting because, so that's another possibility, a couple hundred thousand that could go over time. And then any other say, like if we, for the restroom renovations for next year, I think it's a $4 million budget. If that comes in at 3.5, let's say, in the end, then we'd be able to reallocate the additional 500,000 back over. We just don't know that yet. And so that's what we mean by these unknowns or when. But we're so optimistic we can find a way to make this, make this possible.
Have we done any, I know that the project has not been completely finalized yet, but it's gone pretty far down the road, the Lamston project. Won't there be substantial developer fees from that project?
Yes.
Substantial.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
As well as growth of enrollment. And so some of those developer fees, we may have to look at, would we need to, as our classrooms have, we now, our elementary spaces have well spaces. We have dedicated full classrooms for our psychologists and, and special education. We may need to add some additional rooms if that happened. It would, not at every site, it just, we'd have to do it on a case bike. But yes, that could be some other ways to, to generate income.
Thank you.
But this project, I would hope, might be done before even some of those developer fees could fully be factored in. We'll see.
And the last item I have is contingency management, which I alluded to earlier. On, on some of our other projects, we, we always try to manage our contingencies throughout the design and construction phases to really save money and roll it over to future projects. So we would continue to manage our contingencies that were mentioned earlier as well. And just to mention some of those factors that can influence costs that we are trying to cover with this estimate. It could be from the global economy and tariffs, inflation and its impact on construction materials, and just the local construction economy and labor availability. So with, with every, with the tariffs that are making things go up, materials go up in price, if there's less, less going on in the economy, construction also becomes cheaper in that way too. It could also work the opposite way too, with the state bond passing and construction being busier. Construction can become more expensive.
And all the rebuilding of the fires. I know a lot of people are talking about, there's going to be so much construction because so many communities were devastated in the LA fires, that that also could have an impact on construction costs as well.
But essentially.
Things we can't factor right now fully.
Essentially, those are just really big unknowns that we have to incorporate into our project budget. And that is why we have such a large escalation contingency. Moving on to some of the more fun parts of the presentation. So I wanted to bring us back to that main entrance of the campus where you have that promenade, you're walking past the STEM building. And that Performing Arts Center is really a focal point for the campus. So this is what you would currently see as you're walking up. And then this is just a concept rendering of what it could look like from our architect. I do want to add that we have not designed the exterior, this is only a concept. One of the ideas that we had to open up that lobby space is when we pull that lobby out, is increasing the height with a glass facade. Now that would allow more natural light to come in and it would remove that feeling of the low ceiling that's currently in the lobby. So it's going to allow more natural light to flow in and it's going to open the space up without having to really touch the existing structure of the Performing Arts Center. In addition, the, the restrooms would be located on the right and left-hand sides. If I go back, you can see it on the Performing Arts Center. We actually have that overhang that's on the right and left-hand side. You could see it more on the right of the front doors right there. So we're really going to be filling in that space and taking it and reutilizing, repurposing it for restrooms. And it allows for us to have a completely new face to the PAC. It would really, it would really renovate the aesthetics and the overall look of the PAC without having to really structurally change the, the whole building.
And we do have a larger image I can share with you and we can review to get a better picture of that. But we wanted to just be mindful of, of the cost here and not, and get ahead of ourselves yet. But it really is inspiring and when I see that picture, it inspires all of us, I think, to, we've got to find ways to, to, to find money to, to make this happen. Because it really does transform that entire space. And then the video display boards that you, we currently have, you know, our thoughts were, you could put one on the left and the right flank, which is over the rest, so they don't need to be butted up there. We can still, because the high school really uses those to advertise both the arts and, and other events as well. And so we could put them on both, basically would be the exterior of the restrooms, which would be a great opportunity and, and not remove this beautiful sight of that glass, high ceiling, et cetera. So really visionary, I think.
Very, very much. And I, I do believe that I also read that it would increase, not tremendously, but it would increase seating.
Yep, I, I believe it increases it from 579, I want to say to 594. So that's, that's an increase of, of a few seats, but it also is increasing the three rows on the right and left-hand side that the seating already exists, but they just don't have visibility.
You know, that was my point actually, because when I looked at that and, you know, 579 to 594 may not seem as much. So I would ask if it's possible, can we quantify the, by elevating the number of seats that now we are providing that have visibility? So in essence, you're really adding a lot more than the 15.
Right, I, I can definitely take a look at that and get that to you in this week, in Week in Review. It's, it's something that, I didn't want to put in this presentation because we're not technically adding, but in terms of visibility, we are.
We are, yes.
I'll definitely share that.
Yeah, thank you.
So I don't know if you can tell me, I just want to say, CJ, that was wonderful. And you, you are, you are so much a part of every single structure that's gone up in the last five or six years. Your imprint will be there permanently and it's all been beautiful and wonderful and completely changed our, our campuses and, and the life that we provide for our staff and students and community. So, you know, your, your, your company you're going to is very fortunate and blessed and we're sad to lose you, but happy for you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderfully talented man.
And happy first-year birthday to Mr. CJ Nolan III. His CJ son's, when your birthday is today.
I cannot believe it's been a year.
Happy birthday.
So we're having a, we're having a big birthday bash this weekend.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Alrighty, well, thank you guys.
Thank you. So wonderful. So now we're going to consent items. I'd like a motion for approval of consent items 11A through AB.
I so moved.
Set.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. 5-0. Moving to action items, we have resolutions for some very special recognitions. Mrs. Hill, would you read our first resolution for our classified employees?
I would. I'm going to read a very well-put-together summary. Tonight, we proudly shine a light on the incredible contributions of our classified professionals, the dedicated individuals whose work often happens behind the scenes, but whose impact is felt in every classroom, hallway, and school office. From keeping our campuses clean and safe to making sure students get to school, have meals seed and access technology, and receive the support they need. Our classified staff are truly the backbone of our district. They are the quiet heroes who show up early, stay late, and do their work with care, pride, and deep commitments to our students and staff. In sincere appreciation for all they do, the Board of Education proclaims May 18 through the 25th, 2025, as Classified School Employee, Employee Week in Los Alamitos Unified School District. We are so grateful for the heart and the hard work they bring to our schools every single day.
Beautifully written, beautifully shared. Do I hear a motion for approval? Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. So Mrs. D'Angelo?
Mrs. Patasani?
Yes.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Bragman?
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0. We now have adoption for a recognition of teachers and that will be, Mr. Forehand, please.
Tonight, we take a moment to honor the teachers who make such a profound difference in our lives and in the lives of their students. As a former teacher, I know how much heart, effort, and love goes into every lesson, every conversation, and every quiet moment of encouragement. Teachers are ones who shape futures, spark curiosity, and believe in students even when they may not yet believe in themselves. Their impact reaches far beyond the classroom. It's in the confidence they help build, the passions they help ignite, and the hope they instill for what's possible. On behalf of the Board of Education, we proudly proclaim May 6, 2025, as Day of the Teacher in the Los Alamitos Unified School District. We are forever grateful for the dedication, passion, and selflessness that our teachers show each day and the lasting legacy they create in the hearts and minds of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Do I have a motion for approval?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? It's a roll call?
Mrs. Patasani?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Bragman?
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0. Our final adoption is for a resolution for our administrators. And that, Mr. Bragman?
Tonight, we recognize the incredible leadership and dedication of our school administrators. From principals and assistant principals to instructional leaders, business officials, and classified administrators, these professionals ensure student success by supporting teacher, by supporting teachers, managing school operations, and creating safe, inclusive environments. Their work impacts every aspect of our schools, helping to shape the future of education in our district. In appreciation of their dedication, the Board of Education proclaims May 1, 2025, as Day of the School Administrator. We thank our administrators for their leadership, hard work, and unwavering commitment to our students, staff, and community.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Patasani?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Bragman?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 and we should celebrate these individuals every single day. They're wonderful. Moving on to approval of a tentative agreement, Dr. Wiestrath?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And I would like to point out Teacher of the Year and Lead Negotiator, Mrs. Lori Avalos, has hung in there.
I know, didn't get to go celebrate with her family.
So we're, we're, again, very fortunate to have a strong partnership with LAEA. And tonight, we're bringing forward the tentative agreement for the 2024-25 school year. It was voted on by LAEA last week and was passed, and so tonight we bring it forward for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
I second.
Any discussion? To thank both teams for the hard work. It's very hard work and it takes a lot of collaboration and effort, so thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Thanks, Lori. Now we're looking for approval of the 2027-2028 school calendars. Dr. Wiestrath?
Yes, as part of the tentative agreement, LAEA also votes on the calendars and we try to plan those for three years out. And so tonight, we're bringing forward the 2027-2028 calendars.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Sec, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Moving on to approval of supplemental materials, Mrs. Reed?
Thank you, President Davidson. Tonight, we are bringing back AMIRA as a dyslexia screening tool. It has been on public preview for the past 30 days. It is already board-approved as an intervention tool inside our textbook adoption of Hoot and Mifflin Horcourt into reading. But tonight, it's coming forward in accordance with Senate Bill 114 to be used as a dyslexia screener under the California mandate.
I will.
Thank you. All the, a motion for approval?
I will happily move the two approve of that.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. And now, Mrs. Schnurr is going to tell us about acceptance of bid number 2425-02 with Keystone Builders.
Thank you, Madam President. We are requesting approval for the agreement with Keystone Builders, who were the lowest responsible bidders for the upcoming summer classroom renovation project at the high school. These should be our last classroom renovations that we do for the high school. These will include rooms in buildings 500, 700, and some of the, some of the classroom areas within the PAC, the outward areas, which are sometime offices and changing rooms, as well as the jazz band, jazz and band rooms.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Now on to adoption of Resolution 2024-2025. Mrs. Schnurr?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Like we do every year, we are requesting approval of this resolution to increase the special tax rate assessed within our Community Facilities District. Each year, the special tax, which is also known as our Melrose, may be, may be increased by 4.75%. Last year, that tax was 261.64 cents. The resolution will increase the tax to $274.06. This special tax is used for us to be able to pay for our certificate of participation debt, which is our COPs.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
I so moved.
Sec, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I believe it's a roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry. Roll call?
Mrs. Patasani?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Bragman?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Again, about approval of the arts, music, instrumental materials discretionary block grant.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Yes, we are bringing forward the expenditure plan for this one-time funds provided by the state, which is called the Arts Music Instructional Materials and Discretionary Block Grant. And I want to make sure we don't confuse that with Proposition 28, which is Arts Music in Schools, which is completely separate. This is a one-time fund and as you recall, we are using these funds for the PAC. But as you noticed today, we most likely not start the project until the summer of 2026 and these funds need to be spent by June 30th of 2026. So that only leaves us with the option of shifting some funds around and allow us, because the grant allowable uses is really discretionary for health and welfare benefits, for increases in retirement. So that is a perfect opportunity for us to use those funds this year and next year and shift those funds around. So the plan allocates the expenditures primarily for health and welfare benefits, the increases of health and welfare benefits, and our retiree health and welfare benefits. Therefore, we're going to be shifting some funds around and from the Unrestricted General Fund, move those funds to Fund 40, allowing us to continue to support the PAC renovation.
Thank you for your wise use of funds. Do I have a motion for approval?
I so moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. And now Dr. Wiestrath is going to speak with us about approval of a settlement agreement and waiver of expulsion hearing.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're bringing forward a stipulated agreement and waiver of expulsion hearing for a student. From March, the agreement will run from March 28, 2025 through June 5, 2025. And it's for a student that had a violation of California Education Code 48900 and we recommend approval as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries five zero. Dr. Wiestreich, you get to speak again about salary range relocation.
Thank you, yes. This was a study that we conducted and presented to the Personnel Commission at our last Personnel Commission meeting to reallocate the salary range for the position of instructional aide reading lab based on some increased qualifications. And the salary range will be increasing about three percentage, three percentages? 3%? Thank you. Wow. I apologize, 3%.
Long night.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? So we're going to reallocate, we're not going to relocate. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries five zero. We're looking at approval of revised job description for campus supervisors and some other positions. We're going, if it's okay, we can vote on these as a group?
Yes.
Is that accepted?
I make a motion that we.
Ms. Dr. Wiestreich?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. As you know, thank you, Madam President, this year we have been engaging with different subcommittees throughout CSEA to revise and update all of our job descriptions. And so this is our instructional classification series. These have already been approved by the Personnel Commission and have been submitted to the CSEA Chapter for 610 approval. And tonight, we're recommending their approval by you guys.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve L through W?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries five zero.
Lot of work, thank you.
That was a lot of work. Thank you. I'm looking at approval of warrants. Those are the bills we pay every month and they are, it's an extensive list, you work hard on them.
Forty-six, I think.
Really, literally, we know how much you spend on erasers and we don't even buy erasers very often anymore. So do I have a motion for approval of warrants?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries five zero. Okay, looking at another wonderful part of the night is acceptance of donations from our wonderful community. These all come from a variety of resources, you can see them on the list here, and this month's total is $78,657.49 for a total of $901,903.76. That's wonderful. Almost a million dollars. Stunning, it's stunning in tough times. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
I would, I will move to approve that.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.